And I end by recalling for to your minds, the commandment for God tells us, "I am the Lord your God; you shall have no other gods before me." And Judge and Commissioners, I have here a medal of the Holy Spirit for each one of you, blessed by the cross given to me by Pope Saint John Paul II, to help and guide you in all you do. May I come up?
Yes, yes, you may.
Well, we'll let the Holy Spirit take it, Bishop. Would you please join me, Bishop, in the Pledge of Allegiance? Our Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. Thank you. Thank you, Bishop. Have a good day. Okay. I'll ask that this statement, Elizabeth, be made part of today's record.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Thank you, Judge. Just wanted to take a quick moment, personal privilege moment, to acknowledge someone that we lost recently. I know at the end of the court meetings, we usually do this when the courtroom is empty, but we lost a very special person, an artist here, homegrown, Flaco Jimenez, this last week. And so I just wanted to acknowledge his influence. He died on July 31st, just about a week ago, at the age of 86. He was a Grammy Award-winning accordionist and singer known for his Tajano and Norteño tunes, one of the godfathers of Conjunto. He's being remembered as a member of the supergroups, The Texas Tornadoes, Los Super Seven, a bunch of other major hits, and someone that's had a significant influence here in our culture in San Antonio. So I just wanted to recognize him. I know one of his famous songs is "There Is No Beer in Heaven." That's why we drink it all here. I have a feeling that he found some Miller Lights up there at some point.
I'm sure he did.
So if we could just take a brief moment of silence to acknowledge and bless his family and uplift them. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. All right, we'll start with ceremony items. Our first presentation is service pins, recognizing employees for 25-plus years of service. I'll ask that Richard G. Lopez, please step forward. You're with the Juvenile Probation Department. So if you, your family, your colleagues, your supervisors, the chief, is the chief here? There's the chief. Hello, Chief. Chief Jill Mata.
Good morning, Judge Sakai. Good morning, Commissioners. We are so privileged to be here to honor Richard and his 25 years. When we have employees like Richard, that's what keeps us running the way that we do. He's been dedicated, and I've asked, his deputy chief is here as well as his supervisor. He's in the intake unit. One thing I want to say about him is he started, Richard started in detention as a worker with children and worked his way up. He got his college degree while he was here working in the county full-time. And then he was promoted over to the intake unit as a probation officer, and he's remained there and worked his way up the ranks to Assistant Supervisor. He actually works the midnight shift, so it's even more impressive that he's here with us now because that's shift work. And so all of his colleagues would be here with him, except that they're either asleep or working, and it's a 24-hour operation. So we're so happy. And his family's here, his beautiful family, his wife and children. So I'm going to ask Suzanne Hanlon, his deputy chief, to say a few words.
Thank you. It is my honor and privilege to be here with Richard, to celebrate with him this amazing accomplishment. I've known Richard for probably over 20 years now, and so it's even more special to be here with his wife, his family, and supervisor and chief. He did begin his career with us in 2000, May 2000, when he was hired as a juvenile detention officer one, as the chief stated. He was promoted in March 2001, where he's remained until he was promoted to the intake unit in September 2010. He progressed through the ranks, and he eventually was promoted to Assistant Supervisor in 2021, where he remains at that current position. As she stated while he was with us, he earned his bachelor's degree from the University of Incarnate Word in Education in 2008. He has been the recipient of multiple letters of appreciation and accommodation to include Employee Excellence Award in 2021, and we are so happy and appreciative of your dedication to the youth and families that we serve, and congratulations on this accomplishment.
Richard, would you have a few words? Why don't you introduce your family, who I believe is with you?
I have my wife, Diana Lopez, my daughter, Rihanna Lopez, and my son, Elliot Lopez. So yeah, so it's been a privilege to work with these kids. There are a lot of them who are disadvantaged, and to help them through tough times when they come into our unit, it's been a great joy for me. So I've enjoyed it, and I want to continue with it.
Thank you, Richard. Let's give another round of applause. Why don't you come forward? Why don't you come forward to receive your pin, Richard? Bring your family. And could we take a picture with everybody? There's your 25-year pin. That's right. And you're going to work another 25 years, right, Richard? All right. And does that include you, Ms. Mata? Are you going to stay in the 25 years? Good, okay. All right, thank y'all very much. All right, let's tee up. Let's have Stephanie Inez Gonzalez, 25 years, Tax Assessor. Mr. Uresti, bring Stephanie, her family, her colleagues. Oh, boy, we got a little entourage here.
Well, as you know, whenever the Tax Assessor Collector's Office does something, we do it in a big way, sir. Okay, so thank you for the honor of being here today. I'm happy to be presenting to you today, Ms. Stephanie Gonzalez, for her 25-year pin. Stephanie started out in June of 2000 with the DA's office and quickly moved to the Tax Assessor Collector's Office in November of 2000 as the Office Assistant to the Property Tax Director. In 2004, she was promoted to Assessing Processor Technician, and then in 2009 to Lead Processor. In 2017, she became a Supervisor in the Property Tax Department, working in the Assessing and Payment Processing Sections. In February of '22, Stephanie became the Director of Public Information and serves in that capacity today, overseeing the Information Center and the Correspondence Section. She is the proud mother of three daughters, Krista, Cassidy, and Carissa. And recently, Stephanie became a very proud glamor, right? Glamor, is that what they call you? So she is a devoted wife to Mr. Bobby Gonzalez, and Bobby's right here. Who you have, Bobby? And enjoys traveling and spending time with her family and giving back to her community and church. She's excited to be here today with her family and to share this milestone with her favorite Tax Assessor Collector. She, and anyway, with that, I'm going to let her say a few words.
Stephanie, Stephanie, step forward. Want to introduce your family?
This is my husband, Bobby, and this is Carissa, Krista, Cassidy. This is Aaliyah, and that's Aria and Matt. And my mom is here today, too. I just want to say thank you, Judge Sakai, for this invitation to Commissioners. I started when I was just 25, so I've been here half of my life. Who would have thought property tax would be something interesting to somebody? When I was a little girl, I would tell my mom, "Why? Why? Why?" And she would say, "Wait till your father got home, and you can ask him." And I want to thank my dad for the patience for answering my whys, and for my mom for the good direction. I would also like to extend gratitude to the women mentors of the tax office, to my coworkers that allow me to mentor them, and to the friendships that I hold dear. My passion is knowledge, and I have always strived to educate myself as well as others, to understand the tax office. I would like to thank Mr. Gutierrez for always debating tax laws with me and challenging me to learn from them. Thank you to Ms. Anderson for supporting my ideas and being one of my favorite cheerleaders, and to Mr. Uresti for teaching his staff to strive to be great and granting me the opportunity for growth with the organization. Thank you to my husband, Bobby, for 29 years, and our three daughters for their support attending all the tax office activities, cooking, baking, and listening to my boring tax office stories. Together, the five of us have created a beautiful family support of each other, and I truly thank God for the opportunity for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Would you come forward to accept your pin? And have everybody come forward, and we'll take a picture. Here you go, Steph. Congratulations. 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 Come on, Mama. There we go. She wants a picture, too, right? There we go. Come on, Steph. I gave it to her. There we go. All right, here we go. There we go. Thank you, one. All right, our third employee with 30-plus, 30 years is Maria Salas Salinas with the District Court Criminals. Oh, man, she's got, she brought her, she brought her supporters here. So Maria, step forward with your family, your troops, your cheerleaders.
I apologize, Your Honor and Commissioners. I did not invite my family. This was just another day in the office for me. I'm so sorry.
Okay, well, you brought your DA family.
But I did bring my work family. I did.
There we go. All right.
I'd like to just say a couple, a few words, and then I think Maria wants to say some.
All right, Donna, go ahead.
So Maria Salinas has been the backbone of court administration for over 25 years, and prior to that, she served in the District Attorney's Office. She's currently the administrator in court administration, supervising our lovely interpreters, which a lot of them are back here.
And court reporters?
And our court reporters. And her light and laughter are what make Maria so special to our department, but her institutional knowledge with over 30 years in the county make her simply irreplaceable. So congratulations, Maria, on a great milestone. And I think you want to say some words.
First, I'd like to thank Judge Sakai and the Commissioners for giving us such an amazing workplace. Bear County is by far the best. You know, we've had our ups and downs, but David has always managed to save the day.
Oh, my.
Every day, every year.
David got a shout-out, wow.
It does not go unnoticed, David. I did.
Take care of him, David. Take care of the district courts, all right?
Budget season, just saying. I did, I have been asked before, you know, how have you been able to stay, you know, 30 years with Bear County? Why is it that you stay? And I wrote a few words I'd like to share with everybody. Getting a little nervous here. I consider myself incredibly fortunate and truly blessed to have worked alongside so many remarkable individuals, people who have been unwaveringly supportive, loyal, and passionately committed to the same vision that drives me. Together, we have built a department that is not only productive and prestigious, but also grounded in accountability and a positive empowering work environment. Through the strength, excuse me, through the strength and encouragement of my colleagues, I have found the resilience to overcome some of the toughest challenges in my personal life. My Bear County family has been a steadfast source of support, lifting me up during the hardest moments. To each and every one of them, for their unwavering faith and friendship, I offer my deepest gratitude. It is this spirit of unity and shared purpose that gives me courage and inspires me every day to keep pushing forward, knowing that together we can achieve great things with the promise of brighter days ahead. And that's all I'd like to share. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Maria, why don't you come forward? Everybody come forward, you ought to be in the picture.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Here you go, Maria. You're welcome. All right.
Ready, Sasa, get him a picture. Ready, one, two, three.
Hey, Julieta. Hey, Melissa. Long time no see. I'm doing great, how are you? All right. Okay, we're now going to do the presentation and proclamation on behalf of Commissioners' Court Recognizing Temple Bethel. On their 150th anniversary, I'd like to welcome Rabbi Ma'ar Nathan, Senior Rabbi of Temple Bethel, and guests to join us in commemorating the 150th anniversary of Temple Bethel. Temple Bethel has a rich history. Our county clerk team identified a fascinating record from 1888. It is a map of downtown when Temple was located on Travis Street across from the, what now is First Baptist. We're grateful to have you here today. Commissioner Cowart, Temple Bethel believes in your district, so I'm going to yield to you to read the proclamation.
Thank you so much. It's great to see you, Rabbi. Thank you for joining us again this morning.
Thank you.
Yeah, the proclamation reads, "Whereas Temple Bethel firmly believes in the Jewish value that we are created in God's image and remain steadfast in its code of ethics, enshrining the values of holiness, honesty, honor, compassion, justice, and a commitment to the highest standards of personal integrity, social responsibility, and human decency, while remaining relevant to today's world. And whereas, as a founding member of the Union of American Hebrew Congregations, now the Union of Reform Judaism, the synagogue is honoring its 150-year legacy of providing a sacred framework to learn and grow Jewishly in a vibrant and inclusive community. And whereas, since its founding in 1874 with 44 member households, Temple Bethel outgrew its original structure and constructed a new building in 1903 on the same site in downtown San Antonio for over 145 member households. In 1927, it moved to its present location at the corner of Belknap and Ashby, and has since become an iconic landmark with more than 900 member families with the motto, "Under this dome, anything is possible." And whereas, members and clergy have been at the heart of Reform Jewish life and community in Bear County since Temple Bethel's inception, and it is now the largest synagogue in South Texas with Senior Rabbi Ma'ar Nathan serving since 2014, Associate Rabbi Marina Jürgen since 2015, and Kanter Seth Eddinger since 2024. Now therefore being resolved, the Bear County Commissioners' Court hereby salutes Temple Bethel's 150th anniversary in Bear County, witness our signature in the seal of office's fifth day of August 2025, signed by Judge Sakai and the Commissioners' Court. We'd love to hear a word from you, Rabbi, if you have something to say."
Thank you so much for this really special recognition. On behalf of my congregation, our Board of Trustees, we're really grateful for the support and recognition of the county. Temple is committed to being really close to downtown, part of the city itself. Our commitment to social justice and taking care of our larger community is something that is one of our core values, and we always open our doors to anyone of any faith tradition who wants to come and not only take a tour of our beautiful building, but really be present in our space, whether it's for worship or community gathering. And we're proud to be a space where people come from all over the city and beyond to gather in good times and also in sad times. We continue to be committed to being good partners with the county and with the city, and look forward to, God willing, another 150 years of serving the Jewish community in South Central Texas. So thank you so much for the honor.
Rabbi, if I could say a few comments? Thank you for your leadership there at Temple Bethel. As I've heard, it has grown and continues to grow, and obviously, we live in some really tough times, Rabbi. So obviously, there's been some unfortunate circumstance that appears to be anti-Semitic, and I want to condemn those type of acts, those type of words, those type of actions. But in response, as I asked Bishop Fife or Michael Fife, could I ask you for prayer? So that for our community, that in spite of these tough times, that we all work together to come together, that we find our common bounds, that we find our common goals, that we find that we are all in this together, and that despite acts such as what has happened recently, we will survive, and we will move on, and we will be better, stronger, and that we will be a better community. Hopefully, we can pray for our country, too, in that regard, and our state. So would you do that for me?
Absolutely.
All right. Okay, would you come forward, Rabbi, to accept your proclamation? All right. See you next week. All right, we're moving on. We're going to time certain now. We're going to close right now. The time is 9:35. We'll close the Commissioners' Court. We're going to open for a public hearing. The Commissioners' Court advised public input regarding authorization for the abatement of property located at 27523 Twin Peak, San Antonio, Texas 78261, to include the demolition of a structure or dwelling, boarding of the secondary structure, and associated removal and hauling materials from the property of precinct 3. So Elizabeth, do we have all the slips here? Let me have the slips, and is there anybody that is asked to sign up to speak on this time certain of a issue dealing with the abatement of property located at 27523 Twin Peak? You need to sign up. If you're not here, then the court calls 9:36 and closes the public hearing, reopens to the Commissioners' Court. We'll now take up and discussion appropriate action regarding authorization for abatement of property located at 27523 Twin Peak, San Antonio, Texas 78261, to include the demolition of a structure dwelling, boarding of the secondary structure, and associated removal and hauling of material from the property of precinct 3. Mr. Reinhardt, you've done a PowerPoint presentation. First, may I ask, is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Moody, second by Commissioner Clay Flores. We have a motion on the floor. Mr. Reinhardt, run us, just explain to the court and to the public what we're doing here.
All right, good morning, Court. I'm here today to request approval to abate the reference property at 27523 Twin Peak Street. Little bit about background information about the property. This is in far north Bear County, near Borgfield Road. The property itself is five acres. The land size and the structures, you can see on the screen, there's two structures. There's a primary structure that's approximately 6,800 square feet, which we'll be proposing to demolish the remaining structure and remove the debris, and the second which as part of this process, we will board up. Here you can see some pictures of the current state of the property. As you can tell, it partially collapsed in a fire, and I'll describe the history of the process here on the next slide. So dating back to 2021, in October, we received notice that the structure had burned down, and so we issued notice of violations two separate times to the property owners. The property owners were unresponsive, so after several months, we forwarded the case to the Justice of the Peace to begin the court process. Throughout 2022, court dates were set, and the owners failed to appear at court. So in 2023, fines were paid and the case was closed. And you'll see again in '24 and '25, the violation persisted, so fines were issued, and fines were paid, and the case restarted itself. So we're here today to request approval to move forward with the abatement. Just a brief summary on the abatement process. So based on our recently amended court order, we're required to put notice on the Commissioners' Court consent agenda describing the abatement procedures that have been found to date. If a demolition is required, which it is, and we're here today, a hearing will be set for the public to weigh in. Should we get authority to proceed, we'll then begin with the abatement process and place a lien on the property. And you can see here, we do have a quote from a contractor for approximately $23,000 for the abatement. So the recommended motion today is I'm requesting approval to proceed with the abatement of the reference process, property.
Commissioner Clay Flores.
So who owns this property and what's going to happen with it?
So the property is owned by two private owners. After we clean the property, we'll place a lien on that property. Should that property sell in the future, the lien would be required to be paid off.
And it'll belong to?
The property will stay with the current owner. We're just simply coming in and cleaning it up and placing a lien for that value on the property.
But who's going to pay for this $22,950?
The county will be paying that. Very similar to other code compliance.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion, Commissioner Moody? This is your motion.
Well, I just want to highlight, appreciate our and your team's work on this. I know my team, Jenny Enderland, and others have been involved for some time. We've heard from constituents over the past years on this being, being an issue and having folks very concerned about it, and I think that this is a good step forward as we try to deal with this issue for our community.
Okay. Done. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Moody, second by Commissioner Clay Flores. All of us in favor of the motion, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. So Art, let me just put on record that I have asked, this issue was formerly in Dr. Guadalupe's Public Health, is now moved over to Public Works and your department, correct, Art? And you will be in charge of that. So I want the public to understand that I've instructed Dr. Guadalupe at that time and now, Art Reinhardt, that in regards to properties that are not being taken care of, that they're considered a nuisance and going through that formal process, that the county will be aggressive in enforcement in order to make sure that our neighborhoods are safe and secure. And I take the position that people who abandoned their properties are not responsible and need to be held accountable, and I expect Art to take the appropriate action on those property owners that do not comply with that. Is that a correct understanding of what the policy of the county is at this time?
That's correct, Judge.
All right, have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the time certain. We now go immediately to 4A2, Discussion Appropriate Action Regarding the Status of the Bear County Criminal District Attorney's Office, High-Risk Intake Team, and the Current Condition of the Intake Division Backlog, Authorizing the Extension of Additional Funding for the High-Risk Intake Team to Allow the District Attorney's Office to Utilize Unused Funds, an Amount of $296,000 Resulting from Vacant Positions Within the District Attorney's Office. Mr. Gonzalez, you have the floor.
Good morning, Judge Sakai and Commissioners. We are handing you a copy of a PowerPoint that we put together. Unfortunately, because we are required to submit the PowerPoint presentation two weeks before we appear before you, that would not have given us accurate information, and so hopefully by doing it this way, we'll give you as accurate a number as we can. These numbers that I'm going to talk about today reflect the numbers as of yesterday. If I can begin by reminding the court that back in November of 2023, this court approved a budget-neutral program allowing us to utilize our own funds to attack the backlog that we had in the office. We created a high-risk intake reduction plan, came to you to ask for funding. This court approved it, and so we're here to give you an update. It has now been about a year and a half that we have been operating this program. I'm here to tell the court that it has been a successful program. We have reduced the backlog, and because of that, at the end of it, we will be asking for you to continue to allow for you to continue to allow us to use, again, funds that have already been allocated to the District Attorney's Office. It's a budget-neutral request, but it's one that has been successful. If you look at the first slide, it talks about that the backlog is comprised of two types of cases. You can think of it as two baskets, one being arrest cases where a defendant is arrested, then makes bond, the other one being an at-large case where no arrest is made, but a case is filed in our office. As of yesterday, then, where I reported the backlog being 6,330, the last time I was in front of this court, it is now reduced to 4,817 cases. Now, if all this program did was focus on those 6330 cases, or 6,300 and so, then I will tell you that we have gotten all, we've resolved all the bond cases and only have 250 of those original at-large cases, or that is, that we have attacked over 95% of those cases. But of course, our intake of cases remains constant. It's fluid, so as we resolve some, others come into the backend. The DA's office, again, is requesting permission to use funds to continue this program. And if you look at the next slide, it talks about how we calculate the backlog. Back when we first began this program, we identified a backlog as four bond cases with an offense that was over 180 days and at-large cases with an offense date of over one year. Fugitive cases were never considered part of the backlog. That was a problem because what we were doing was creating an unfair method of calculating a backlog. Today, how we measure a backlog is not from the offense date, but when the case is actually filed in our office. The reason is because that gives us a more accurate picture of when a case is considered a backlog. For example, offense that occurs in 2022, for example, is being investigated but is not filed in our office until this year, then it's not considered a backlog as of this measure because we're looking at when the case is actually filed. So again, the reason we use this method is it gives us a more accurate figure of what is and what is not a backlog. The next slide talks about the issues, and again, I don't want to belabor this point. We've talked about it in the past, but the same issues that I addressed with this court before still persist, the biggest being the prosecutor shortage. We are down an entire division of prosecutors, about 30 or so, and the struggle has to do with money. Most of the prosecutors that have resigned will come by for an exit interview and will tell me that they're leaving because they are being offered jobs and other opportunities. Of course, the private sector always attracts prosecutors, but we're seeing, what we're seeing now is that the smaller counties, because of a grant that was given by the governor's office, are able to go to smaller counties for more money with less work, less of a caseload. So that's a challenge in our office that continues to persist. Evidence is another challenge that we have. The amount of evidence, as I mentioned before, is exponential compared to years past. The biggest example is body-worn cameras. You know, when you have a crime scene where before you might have had four or five officers and had a couple of photos, today you have a number of officers, they each have body camera footage. Our prosecutors have to review every one of those in order to make a charging decision. And the crime lab is still another area where we see some delays. For example, there are about a fourth of the current backlog that are waiting on crime lab analysis. There's been some relief, but we still see a backlog. And then another area I have here is Odyssey. Since the day that Odyssey has gone live, we have seen some issues. It continues to improve, but again, we still have those challenges. The next two or three slides is a reflection of the progress that we've made. The diagram, and by the way, again, we have separated the backlog of cases into two baskets, the at-large, where there's no arrests made, and the bond cases. On the at-large, and again, if I can point you to the orange line, because this is how we're now determining the backlog, from the file date, you will see that from January 7th of last year until yesterday, we have reduced the cases or eliminated about 734 of those cases. So we've seen a reduction of 33%. The next slide, again, this is the bond backlog, but we broke it into two different slides because one is before Odyssey and the one after that is post Odyssey. The one before Odyssey went online, you can see that we had a steady reduction of 20% from January 7th of 2024 to yesterday, from 2,903 cases to 2,333, or 570 cases. That was a 20% reduction. The reason we divided it and wanted to show you that because of Odyssey and all the challenges, and again, the best way I can describe it is growing pains, we saw a little bit of an uptick from about October to the early part of the year. But again, now, the trend as of February of this year is trending downward. So even with Odyssey, even with the challenges that we see, we are trending down. The next couple of slides is just another way of summarizing the success cases reviewed slide. It talks about the first six months of the year. We obviously are only half of the year, so it makes sense to go back two years for the first six months of the year, from January to June. If you look at 2023, we had 11,238 cases reviewed. Last year, during the same timeframe, we had 13,433 cases. And this year, we have already reviewed 14,367. So we've had a 28% increase since 2023 of the cases that we have reviewed in our office. And I think this is a direct reflection of the commitment in our office by our prosecutors to work on this overtime program. The next slide is reflected in indictments. Again, before and after the reduction program, you can see compared to '23, where there was 6,504 cases, and then in '24, 8,687 cases. This year, we already, in half a year, have indicted 9,100 cases. So compared to '23, that's a 3,000-case increase. You can see that our indictments have increased 40% since 2023. We are on track to indict over 15,000 cases by the end of this year. Again, I believe, we believe it's a current reflection of our prosecutors working overtime on the evenings and on weekends with this overtime program. The last slide is basically a summary of what has happened with this program. Fifty-two of our assistant district attorneys have participated in a program of the 149. So that means a little over a third of the prosecutors that are eligible to participate in the overtime program have done so. We have distributed 5,583 cases to be reviewed. As of July 31st of this year, we spent 269,307. That was, again, already allocated to the DA's office. So we're asking to be allowed to continue with this program. We're asking for 296,000 to continue this backlog reduction program. And again, how we're paying for that is with unused salaries from misdemeanor prosecutor positions. This budget-neutral program has been a success and has allowed our office to continue to make progress in the backlog, even with the challenges that I've already outlined and the staffing shortages. In conclusion, Commissioners, I just want to say that my personal goal in leading this charge is to lead this office in the best shape possible when I do end my administration in December of 2026.
All right. I do have a Sisbeher, but is there any questions or comments before we go to Sisbeher? I think Constable Vavadich, you've asked on 4B. So I'm teeing you up. Commissioner Moody?
Thanks, Judge, and thank you for coming back to court to share this with us. Have some comments and some questions. I mean, I'm glad we got this presentation. I think there's a lot more data here than in previous times when you've come. I think that that's important, and not just for DA's presentation, but for county staff at large, right? I joke sometimes, I'm not sure if I've said it here in court, but data's critical, and in God we trust, but all others bring data, right? I think that that's important. We should stick to it. We should make database decisions here in Bear County. So, and first of all, you know, on a positive note, I'd like to highlight, you know, the increase in cases reviewed year over year and indictments. So I think that that also speaks to some good work being done by your prosecutors, moving some cases through. I do have some questions, though, and I appreciate your team and yourself walking us through some of this the other day. But I was doing the math here between the two different categories, right? At-large backlog reduction and the bond backlog reduction, correct? Why is the bond backlog reduction so impacted by, or at least your comments said that was impacted by the Odyssey launch?
You know, I was thinking about that this morning. I don't know, I don't have an explanation for why it was impacted more on the bond versus the at-large. I would, my guess would be that there's a shorter fuse or there's an urgency to get these cases indicted. I don't have a better answer. Maybe somebody, Emily, if you want to field that question. The chief of our intake, Emily Angulo, is here. Do you, did you hear the question, Emily?
It was regarding the bond backlog, Commissioner Moody?
Well, obviously, the presentation's making the case that Odyssey impacted the bond backlog, which really undermined the overall reduction in cases.
It did.
So why that category versus the other category being impacted?
So a lot of the at-large backlog, we were able to still work on. I will tell you, some of the at-large backlog that I have gone through in the past year and a half was from years like 2018 before, and actually beyond that. I had a couple theft of cattle that I had to dispose of, that were just hanging on the list, that weren't a true reflection of our backlog. Regarding our bond backlog, however, once we hit that June-go-live date, we had months where we could only indict our jail cases because we were having so many problems with our grand jury and with the ability to actually file the indictments and for the grand jury men to sign them in Odyssey, we had to only put forth our jail cases because those obviously are the highest priority. And so the bond grew while the jail remained as it should.
Okay. That makes sense. The, I'll just point this out, right? Obviously, you broke this out and the case is being made that Odyssey helps slow the progress here. But if you do add up all those numbers from a year ago, I had 5128 versus the 4817 that we have today when we're talking about using the new metric, new classification. So I should, that is about a 6% decrease overall, just looking at the math. It's a decrease. I think we're moving in the right direction, but you know, whether it's Odyssey or whether it's these other factors, they've undermined some of that progress. You know, hopefully, we can continue to chip away at this and reduce it further. Do we have any goals at this point? What are our goals for kind of like reducing this over the next six months, 12 months? Do we have any?
Our goals, would you like me to speak to some of those? Our goals in intake, and that's family violence intake, that's public integrity and cybercrime intake, and that's CTD intake, is to reduce the backlog as much as we can. Part of that, though, is the high-risk program and the success of the high-risk program. I cannot under, I can't tell you how much being an entire division down of lawyers has affected our ability to show more progress than the 6%. The fact that we can still, at this point, with, I have around 30 people in CTD intake alone. Criminal trial division intake, apologize. If I had those 30 extra lawyers that we are missing from our office, we could make a huge dent. The people that are participating in the high-risk program, we would be able to have more people participating in that high risk, or at least have the opportunity to, if we could keep those people retained or actually hire those people. The fact that we're able right now to just keep our head above water and show a decrease to this court is an accomplishment by our prosecutors and the dedication of our prosecutors.
Okay. And with regard to the crime lab, is that contract in full effect? Are we making gains on that front, the backlog at the crime lab? Sorry, David?
They're spending money, so I assume the answer is yes.
We have seen, we have seen labs coming back from Armstrong, so I know that they are utilizing the Armstrong contract, as Mr. Smith said. We do, however, still have a large backlog of cases that we are simply waiting on labs for. A lot of those are our bond cases. And not only in the crime lab are we waiting on drug cases, our labs to come back, but we're also waiting on firearms analysis, DNA analysis, which can take up to or over a year. And sometimes we cannot indict cases without that firearm analysis or DNA analysis. That takes a while.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to highlight the crime lab because that was one of the concerns that you previously brought up.
Yes.
I'm proud that, you know, the court has approved the measure to try to address that issue.
Absolutely.
And make sure that you get the results that you need in order to prosecute these cases. I think it's, you know, again, it's a step in the right direction. We need to continue to accelerate our efforts and also our production, I think, as we go forward in the new, in the rest of this year. I just want to highlight two other things really quickly because I know it's going to be a long, long day, because we talked about the other day, bond reform. As it relates to this whole conversation, obviously, the state of Texas and the governor have made some moves on that front when it comes to public safety that I fully support. However, the community has expressed concerns about some of the bond amounts that are out there, and I just wanted to highlight publicly some of the comments I made to your team the other day. When we talk about a nominal amount of $100,000, 20 years ago, $100,000 was very different than $100,000 bond today. And that's for a variety of factors. I'll be really quick. First of all, inflation.
Absolutely.
Has dramatically decreased the value of that bondsman today. What I'm hearing is that that percentage can be under 5%, even as low as 3%. So instead of paying 10% on that bond, if you're paying 3% on that bond, it becomes a much lower bar to be able to walk out of jail. And the third thing being trial delays, right? If you were looking at one year or six months for trial completion, you know, 10, 20 years ago, but now you may be looking at three or four years, that's a very different calculation and a very different scenario for our criminal justice system. So I think we need to take a serious look at that. I would suggest that the bond, was it the bail bond board meet and have a discussion about this item and what our current policies are, and if there's any kind of limitations that should be considered by that board going forward to, again, in the interests of public safety and making sure that we're thinking about bonds the same way, making sure that those decisions are being made with public safety as the centerpiece. So I just wanted to highlight that. The last thing I'll say, and I'll move on. I do appreciate that I like the idea of providing your office the flexibility I do appreciate that I like the idea of providing your office the flexibility and the deference to use unspent dollars to go after and attack this backlog. As long as we're making progress, I'd like to see more progress, but we're making some progress. But I think that we should also show that deference to other offices and other elected officials in our community, right? So I think that, you know, we'll hear more about that from others as we go into budget season, but making sure that we try to provide that same deference to other elected officials in our community. That's all. Thank you, Judge.
Commissioner Clay Flores.
So just a couple of questions. Have we started the audit that I requested with Dr. Testa yet, the outside audit?
This is the first I hear about an audit from your office.
I'm sorry?
Excuse me, this is the first I hear about an audit request from you or your office. Who did you direct?
Yeah, that Commissioners Court and I requested it. Thomas or someone from, can y'all speak to that? Well, why doesn't he know what I'm talking about? I guess it hasn't started.
Yes, it was some sessions ago when I think the budget was up here talking about overtime at the jail and you had requested that.
Right.
And I have reached out to Dr. Testa to get some pricing and I've been working with, where did Thomas go?
Thomas.
And giving him some information. So we are looking at that, Commissioner, to see when we can get that started. But I still need to speak with my bosses and, but I am getting them information.
Shouldn't the DA know about that's about to happen though? Why hasn't he heard about it?
The DA's was not here at the time when you requested that. So I think that's why they were still, I was trying to get information and they were still trying to talk to individuals about a possible survey with Dr. Testa on the backlog on in jail and also with the DA's office, so.
Okay, so heads up, that's coming, I guess. So if we can get that done sooner rather than later, because as you guys know, I always say people are rotting in jail and we need to do due process so that they can get on with their lives and we can save money in the process. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Another question is, you talked about the lack of lawyers. So what's the effort being done from your office to recruit new attorneys?
Historically, Commissioner, we would rely on St. Mary's being the local law school, but we've learned that that's not enough. We have, for some time, reached out to different law schools throughout the state. We have participated in various recruitment programs. Jamisa Jarman, our chief administrative attorney, who is in charge of recruitment, can speak to that. Jamisa, you want to address that issue?
Yes, we've made an effort to advertise at all of the law schools and we try to keep those postings up. We also
I'm sorry, you said all the law schools where?
So all the 10 law schools that are in Texas, because we need people who are licensed in Texas. And so we make a concerted effort to go to those places and put up a posting for misdemeanor position. We also go to the TDCAA, they have a job bank, and so we post there regularly and we refresh so it goes back to the top of the list because as time goes on, it drops and we want ours to be the first that they see.
Okay.
We have been in communication with an organization where we can be more aggressive as far as going out and finding the people instead of waiting for them to come to us. But we're still in talks. There's still some issues that we're working on with that.
Okay.
And so those are the types of things that we've been trying to do. I will say, we have advertised at some on-campus recruitment events that they've had. Baylor had two this summer. We received zero applicants. So we are making all the best efforts we can to try to get more applicants, but it's been very difficult. And I do think the pay is an issue because they can make more going other places.
Have you guys worked with HR to see if they have any best practice ideas?
At one point, we had, because we talked about trying to come up with some sort of public service announcement. I had seen what I think Juvenile did back a while ago and also what the dispatchers had done. So we had talked to a person at HR about that and I think they got us in touch with somebody in the public information unit. So now we have a fully staffed communications office, so we're also working with them to try to
You have a, you have a what office?
Communication. So we have two communications people who can help us get the word out and come up with ideas for videos and things like that to get people interested.
Can you reach out to Manny, our HR director?
I know Manny, I can talk to him.
And see if he has any ideas to help with. Okay, thank you. And then is there a possibility of like reaching out to schools out of state? Because, you know, there's a lot of San Antonio people who go to law school out of state, like my colleague over here.
Yeah.
And who want to come back home or want to come back to state, so.
Yes. We attempted to post with the Sunbelt Career Event and we received one applicant. And there were schools from all over the United States that were there. The one issue about getting someone from out of state is that we have to make sure that they can get licensed here pretty quickly.
Yeah, of course.
And so that's kind of a problem. We have hired people from out of state, but we've had to wait for them to finally get licensed here.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Thank you, Judge. I don't know if this is for you, Joe, or Emily, but the slides on seven and eight where you have the comparative, comparative information on the reductions from the same time periods, 23, 24, and 25. So slide seven, for example, shows that cases reviewed have increased 28% since 2023. And I don't need this now, but if you can get us, I think it'd be instructive to know the hours worked. Really, I think for us to know, is it more hours, you have more folks that are volunteering to do this, or is it they become more efficient in making those reductions? And again, I don't need it now, but I think in particular as it relates to Odyssey and hopefully technologies assisting us rather than hindering us, it would be helpful to know if it's as a result of working more hours or just being more efficient with maybe the technology we've got. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner, let me just say this, and you will remember this from your time in the DA's office, that, that the hour spent on a particular case depends on the offense, right?
Yeah.
Somebody's going to spend more hours reviewing a murder case, for example, than a car theft. So it just, it's, it depends on the type of case. But we, as I mentioned, a third of the prosecutors that were eligible for this program have continued to do it. And why? Because if you give somebody a financial incentive, they're going to go out of their way and spend the evenings and the weekends
Sure.
to earn more money.
Yeah. And I get that. I mean, I mean, these are, there's a human aspect to all of these cases. I get that. I guess I'm trying to evaluate what's the systemic value from our investment side, right, in terms of resources and can we do more to make that more efficient? Again, it's probably for another day, but I just wanted to make that point. And maybe we can have a follow-up at some point, Joe, on how, how we could, again, add resources to make it more efficient for the folks that are reviewing the cases.
And I know we need to wrap up, Commissioner, but I will say, we appreciate very much that this Commissioners Court has supported us in the past with our increases for salaries, but it appears to be not enough when, when we compete with the rest of the market. This is not a problem that's unique to Bear County. There was a story about a week ago, Harris County that has three law schools is down 40 prosecutors. It's, it's a problem we see across the nation.
Well, even within our county, right? We just lost one of the prosecutors that was, that is in my unit and the there are prosecutors starting out about 78 and change. I'm not sure the exact amount. And he just left to go to the Public Defender's Office as a misdemeanor prosecutor where he's going to be making 86,000. And he actually has a cap on the number of cases in the Public Defender's Office that he's allowed to work on versus the prosecutors in our office making the 78,000. As far as the hours spent, I believe that, believe as of last week with the high-risk program, we've had over 5,000 hours spent on that program by prosecutors who are participating in it.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Moody?
I just have to make a comment on that, and I appreciate you bringing it up. That's, that's crazy, in my opinion. We actually are losing prosecutors to the Public Defender's Office because we're paying them more money in the Public Defender's Office. We got to figure that out. That's crazy.
Yes, sir, we agree. Thank you.
Okay. Let me, Constable Vavadich, did, a point of clarification, did you want to speak on this particular agenda item or did you have other issues? Because if you do, I'm going to allow you to speak on four B, which is this issue. So if you wish to speak, come forward. That's the only citizen to be heard. And because of the time constraints, I really am going to insist on the three-minute limit. So Constable, you have your three minutes. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, just a big warning to Judge and Commissioners of the Commissioners Court, DA. I support the DA and the use of his use of unexpendated salary funds to be redirected to other needs within his office. These funds are part of his set budget and he has his right to use them as he sees fit. We also commiserate when we talk about, we're talking about Odyssey and our data systems. A lot of times, they don't track exactly as to what we are tracking in the field. And a lot of times, you have to defer to the office holder who has a better understanding versus a computer unless that computer's data is challenged and brought across. I also understand the same problems we have with recruitment and retention of employees. But I do support his use of the unexpendated salary funds. It's innovative. It also keeps a chance. It makes no new tax dollars go towards that effort. Thank you, Constable.
All right. Any further discussion? Is there a motion on the floor? Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by Commissioner Moody. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Judge.
All right. Also, as a point of clarification, I have Constables Deheather, Constable Vasquez. Were y'all wanting to speak on this issue by any chance? Otherwise, I'll call, I'm going to do the best I can to accommodate you, but we also are running up on time certain. So if you'll be patient with me, Constables Deheather, Vasquez, I'll get back to you this time. Let us now take up the time certain, 10 o'clock. We're a little behind. Presentation, discussion, appropriate action regarding the 2025 Ad Valorem Property Tax Rate Recommendation in Bear County Hospital District, DBA, University Health, in support of its operating debt service outlook for FY 2026. Mr. Bannas, your team, I'd like to welcome Mr. Bannas and the leadership of the University Health System, any members of the board here today to present on the proposed Ad Valorem Tax Rate Recommendation to UHS. Well, I understand we're keeping it the same. Also, too, I want to note that Commissioners Court has worked with UHS in recent years to maximize the University Health System homestead exemption. I think Commissioner Moody, you've been involved with, very involved with that, which is now capped at the maximum of 20%. I want to remind our neighbors who are eligible to claim those homestead exemptions through the appraisal district. Mr. Hasselker, good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. The mission of University Health is to improve good health of the community through high-quality compassionate patient care, innovation, education, and discovery. With the support of the Bear County Commissioners Court and the Hospital District Board of Managers, University Health staff continually pursue improvements in all four areas of the triple lane plus. Our vision is to be one of the nation's most trusted healthcare institutions. In response to increasing property tax values, staff has worked with Bear, with the Bear County Board of Managers, the Hospital Board of Managers, Commissioners Court to implement various exemptions to help mitigate the impact on property owners. So with me today is my vice chair, Anita Fernandez. Dr. Kelly had to leave. She's on call and her phone rang and when doctors' phones ring, they've got to leave. So I want to thank Margaret for all that she does. She's an excellent board member. And we are here to ask permission for the tax rate. And with that, I will introduce Ed Bannos, Reed Hurley, Lenny Kirkman, Dr. Alsip. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Cohen, I didn't see you come in. Dr. Cohen is here.
Don't y'all want to join? I'm calling y'all out. Come on, come here, come on.
Ted Day, Bill Phillips.
I want to recognize the team here. We have an outstanding team at
All of our team.
UHS, so.
So.
Y'all want to stay seated? Okay. Go ahead, Mr.
Mr. Bannas.
I want to thank the Commissioners for their strong support. I want to also thank you, Judge, for working with us as we are moving forward with the purchase of the Santa Rosa facility and the medical center. I want to thank the court, the Commissioners for their due diligence and patience. We have not closed yet, but we're on our way to doing it. This will be a major game changer. The Board of Managers worked diligently to help get us to where we are today. And so I want to thank them. And I know Dr. Cohen is very pleased with this, along with Anita. And with that, I'll turn it over so we can get this moving because I know time's of the essence. Thank you for your support and your friendship.
Thank you, Jimmy. Mr. Bannas.
Hi, thank you, Commissioners. Ed Bannas, CEO of University Health, and it's my pleasure today to present the proposed tax rate for 2025. I would like to, just as Mr. Hasselker talked about, we're always looking at the opportunities for quality, patient experience, efficiencies, and access to improve for our Bear County Hospital District and University Health and for all the citizens of Bear County in South Texas. We did want to give you a couple of updates of where we are in some of our construction projects. This is a rendering of our Palo Alto campus and VITA from what it will look like when finally completed. This is our current construction of our Palo Alto campus. The VITA facility, which we got approved by the Commissioners, which is our three-story office building, is over on the far right-hand side. And you can see that the construction of the hospital is moving well. This is located right across from the Texas A&amp;M San Antonio campus. And as you can see, we've got 78% local participation in our construction here in this hospital and medical office building that's attached. Our Rotama campus, we're building the exact same hospital. It looks a little different just from a topography layout. That facility is moving along as well. That is just the office, medical office building and hospital. And we are at 73% local participation in that, that facility. Our VITA facility, which will be opening later this year, this was the rendering with 86% participation. This is the way it currently looks, blending in well with the Texas A&amp;M campus. We will have primary care, specialty care, and pharmacy available on the first floor. Our Institute for Public Health and also community outreach space for public organizations to work with the community for improving healthcare is space available on that second floor. And our third floor is outpatient adolescent and adult behavioral health. We have been able to and have physicians, clinicians, social workers and others already hired for this facility. They will be open when it is available and when it opens later this year, we'll hit the ground running. This is the inside currently. We're very close to the final finishes. Our University Health Wheatley location, this is a current picture of it, is close to being completed. This is 74%. This will have urgent specialty care and primary care. Urgent care will be open seven days a week, open until 8:00 at night. We will also have an outpatient pharmacy on that, so the patients will be able to access their medications. This is closer to being completed. As you can see, the finishes, the flooring is out and we're very close. And that on that date in October. One of the things that University Health has seen over the last 10 years is significant increase in the hospital census. Just a little under 10 years ago, the hospital had 458 patients. Through 2025, our average census is 793, with our census many days in the last few months being over 800, and a few days we've actually, we're over 900. And as you can see, this has led from 26,000 discharges to 42,000 discharges. The demand continues to grow, not only within Bear County, but also for our specialized services such as transplant or pediatric and adult Level 1 trauma care and all the specialized services that we partner with, with UT Health, and making sure that UH is the hospital to go to for advanced specialty care. Our NICU, which is our neonatal intensive care unit, is our part of our women's and children's hospital. When we first built this hospital, the NICU was running around a census of 50. Our average daily census is 67 so far this year. And in the last few weeks, we went over 90. We are taking patient transfers from small babies from one to two pounds from all across South Texas. And we have, and many times, a lot of these are multiple births. We've had quad babies, triplet babies, two sets of triplets. I think we have eight sets of twins all about to deliver that go into our NICU for various time, and it continues to grow. And as you can see, our surgical trend, we did about And as you can see, our surgical trend, we did about 20,000 surgeries in 2015, and now we'll, we'll crack over 34,000 this year in 2025. So the demand for all the services at University Health continues to grow. As Mr. Hasslocker talked to you, there was an opportunity, and I want to thank Christus for reaching out to us when, when they announced that they were closing the Medical Center Hospital. They made a phone call to us to let us know right before they released the news, and said that this facility would be closing. And that started our conversations where we would be able to talk to them about reopening this facility. This is a unique facility. From a size standpoint, it's 45 acres in the Medical Center. It was one of the first properties that was developed in the Medical Centers. If, if my, if I remember correctly, I think the Sisters got this acreage in the early 60s when they were looking at this and developing it. And just to, from a capacity standpoint of land, University Health is only on 22 acres. We had to go vertical, and we went up 12 floors and then got tight density. But this is on 45 acres. On the, on the, when you look at this, the two, the hospital is number two. It's about 236,000 square feet, a four-story building. The, the purple buildings are buildings that would be, when it's acquired, will be owned by University Health. All of the land will be owned. The sort of magenta-colored ones are private office buildings, but they actually pay a ground lease. So we own the land, but the office buildings are private. And we see this as an opportunity for University Health to handle those capacity demands that we had mentioned earlier in the presentation. Also decided to build a five-acre solar farm before they closed. They didn't complete it. It's now completed. It hasn't been turned on. But we are the benefactors of a five-acre solar farm that will save us about $150,000 in electric per year once it's activated. We see this hospital as an opportunity to help decompress the high, the lower-level acuity patients that are at University Health in the Medical Center, and having beds and operating rooms available for, again, the high-level care. This is licensed, and as an acute care hospital, it's been closed by the state of Texas when they announced its closure. So we will have to rework with the state of Texas and get it relicensed as an acute care hospital. And we are actually working with the state while we go through the final agreements and the due diligence. We have entered into, with board approval, purchase service agreement, yeah, purchase sale agreement for, for this property. I wanted to share this as well. I think sometimes we look at who we serve in Bex County. When you look at the percent of patients that we serve, we really do serve all the four districts or precincts that we have. You can see that there's over 1 million outpatient visits that come through University Health, and they're spread out throughout the precincts. And then you can also see where the precincts, from a percentage, you can see the number of inpatient discharges. Our Rotama Hospital, our Palo Alto Hospital, will help Precinct Four and Precinct One help decompress some of that volume that is having to drive up to University Hospital. We also know that the decompression with the Christus Hospital will actually help decompress some of Precinct Two and Precinct Three by having availability. We do get about 9% of our admissions from outside of Bex County. That's, again, for the higher level of care and others. And that's, that's also strategically why we're looking at and expanding those, the community hospitals and now the Christus Santa Rosa property. At this time, I'd like to present Reed Hurley, who will go through the financial changes for our 2026 budget, and then talk about some of the challenges that we have in the current legislation that's, that's happening.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. Reed Hurley, Chief Financial Officer at University Health. Whenever we do the, what we call our tax rate budget, we put together a fairly high-level budget. We remove Community First Health Plans, which is our insurance company. So this is just what we call our Clinical Services Division. There, there has been a lot of stuff going on at a state level and at the federal level. Some of the things at the federal level were planned to occur, reductions in what we call DISH funding, which they've kicked that can down the road for multiple years. That's up again, so those DISH reductions are currently scheduled to go in place. And then there's also a scheduled ending of the enhanced tax subsidies for the exchange plans. And so people that earn exchange plans, they get a discount off what that normal premium would be. Over the last several years, there's actually been an enhanced discount. Again, that's scheduled to end in January 1, 2026. If that ends, we anticipate that about half of those exchange members may drop that coverage, which would decrease our revenue from, from paid payers, and we probably have more unfunded patients. Some of those could move to Medicaid, some might move to CareLink. There are other programs that we consider at risk. We currently have $185 million a year in what we call directed payment programs, and those are approved on an annual basis from CMS at the federal level. We don't anticipate any loss of those. We just wanted to point that out, that's an annual approval that the state of Texas gets, and most of the hospitals in Texas participate in these. And then we have a $34 million a year program called NAPE, Network Access Improvement Program, which will end in September of 2027, and we'll lose that 34 million. This year, with the proposal of keeping the existing tax rate, that'll add $17 million to our MNO revenue. Last year, our MNO revenue went down $21 million when we increased the, the homestead exemption to the maximum 20%. On the expense side, as Ed mentioned, we do have continuing just demand for services. So we will have to increase staff to cover those services. In the second half of 2026, we'll start staffing up for the community hospitals. We'll start bringing new staff on, training them in anticipation of those hospitals opening, so we can get those staffed up. There may be some tariff-related price increases. A lot of the drugs and other things we buy may come in from overseas. We haven't really seen an impact from that yet. Sort of, that's yet to be unknown, so we're layering in a couple percentages increases just in anticipation of that. And then again, we always are keeping our older buildings, roofs, air conditioners, upgrades to those older clinics to try to keep them meeting our standards. So again, when we do the tax rate budget, we usually, we take a conservative approach. But again, just clinical services only, we anticipate almost $2.8 billion in total revenues. That'll produce about $150 million gain from operations. Then when you throw in the non-operating items, primarily depreciation expense, that'll get us to a bottom line projected of about $38 million. Again, this is always a conservative guess. We, we hope, and we plan on doing better. Again, there's still a lot of moving parts at the federal level, and we don't know, sometimes we can guess what the impact will be, but if those enhanced subsidies go away, we're not really sure what that impact's going to be. So we are a little more conservative on our revenues. From a property value standpoint, the assessed values for the hospital district increased 3.4% this year to $315 billion. Actually, the homestead residences went up 2.7%, and that could be multiple factors, new houses that were built. It could be that people that owned a rental house sold their house to somebody that claimed homestead, or maybe just more people claimed homestead that didn't know about claiming a homestead, people from out of state or whatnot. Average market value is just under $337,000. Average taxable value is almost $270,000. The average tax at a homestead, taxpayer pay to the hospital district is $746. There's $185 savings per year based on the exemptions that we currently have in place. The 20% homestead exemption, which went into effect in 2024 last year, will save taxpayers $74 million, or about $172,000 for the average home. And then we have a $30,000 over 65 exemption, which will save taxpayers about $12 million or about $75 a year for those taxpayers that are over, over 65. When you look at the other major Texas hospitals, our tax revenue is about 19% of our total budget. We're comparable or lower than the other, other majors. The other Dallas and Harris, the other two large ones, actually get more revenue. They're, from a percentage standpoint, they're a little over us. And then Tarrant County gets less revenue, but from a percentage standpoint, they're way over us. So again, the proposals to maintain the existing rate of the 27.6235, it's rounded on the slide to four, and there's just a very, very slight movement between MNO and debt service, just to cover our, our debt service requirements for next year. And again, that'll produce 17.3 million more in MNO and 100,000 more we have to move into debt service to cover that. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or between me and Ed, and I believe you have the, the motion.
All right, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge. Ed Reed, thanks for the information. I know that we typically have a more in-depth conversation as we get closer to adopting your budget at the end of the calendar year, so I'm not going to go into too many details. You know, you guys, as always, do a great job. I was reading in the, I guess, in the information you gave us that, it says the first six months of 2025 compared to the first six months of '24, volumes have increased by over 10% in most of the clinical areas. Is that, is that consistent, would you say, with, when you look year over year, over the past few years, or is that seem to be increasing? That 10%?
It's, it's consistent. We did see actually negative during COVID back in 2020, and this happened to all the hospitals across the country, unless you were in an area that was severely impacted by COVID. But the, just as everybody stayed home.
Yeah.
They didn't come get elective surgeries and whatnot, so services really dropped off in 2020. And then it took a few years after that, those like '21, '22, to kind of start to recover. But for the most part, every year, we've seen 7% to 8% increases year over year over year.
Okay.
And typically, in most, in my prior life, and for-profit healthcare and other places, if you can get 2.5% to 3% growth a year in healthcare, usually you're doing pretty good.
Right. Can, can you go back? Go ahead, Ed.
I said, I would say the only thing else that we're actively doing is, is working with the medical school, but also our employed physician practice, UMA, in getting access to care. So we've been hiring more primary care doctors, we've been hiring more specialists, and we think that the man, we know that demand is there in Bex County. Now we're getting the right that's also driving a lot of our volume, is that we're providing in all of these outpatient clinics and all of the hospital, we're actually getting more physicians and more providers that are able to provide care for, for the people that need it.
Okay. The slide that you had that had percentages by precinct, I don't know if you can go back to that, that one there. So this is based on the, I guess, the patient's home address. Is that right? Okay. So, look, I like being number one, but I don't like necessarily being number one here, Precinct Two. But what I was going to ask is, the, the data you collect, and I know this, there's privacy issues, but in terms of some of the reasons people are, are being admitted, obviously would be helpful to, to look at how we can tie that into preventative programs. Is that information that you're, first of all, keeping, and second of all, utilizing in some capacity to try and plug into the preventative programs?
Yeah, yeah. Our Institute for Public Health, it was created a few years ago. We have a subcommittee of the board, and we review our data. We look at that by disease specific. We have Dr. Carol Huber, PhD in public health, who leads that initiative with us. So we're looking at the major causes of cancer by precincts. We're looking at diabetes across the area. And then we're looking at that on how we can work on prevention as well as wellness. And that's leading some of our, our charge. We're doing a lot to get into the school districts as well, because we want to get healthier students earlier before they have chronic disease. So we are focusing our whole public health side of that into how we can look at preventative care, how we can also look at getting the next generation healthier and, and continue that.
Okay, that, that's good to know. I, I assume that, but I just wanted to hear that publicly. Last question on the new campus, the new Christus campus, 45 acres. I know you mentioned some of the existing property has brown leases on it, but I wanted to just put in a plant a seed, a plug for down the road at some point. I think we're going to need a new medical examiner's office. I know we're doing some renovation to an existing facility. I'm not talking about next year, but down the road, it may be something that we should have a conversation on, because I think that would be an ideal location to, to maybe do something like that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We'll be right.
I'm not asking for a commitment today, just a conversation, and we certainly appreciate that. Judge, I know my colleagues may have questions, but I wanted to make the motion, because it, it is statutorily required, and there's some language here that we got to read in. So if you don't mind, I'm going to make the motion to approve the proposal to set the 2025 total tax rate in support of Bex County Hospital District Doing Businesses, University Health, Operating and Debt Service for fiscal year 2026 by adoption of the existing total tax rate of .276235 cents per $100 property valuation. Record such vote and set a public hearing and a vote as follows. Public hearing on September 9, 2025 at 9:30 a.m., and a vote on the tax rate on September 9, 2025, immediately after the conclusion of the public hearing. The public hearing and vote on the tax rate will be held on the double, at the double height courtroom, second floor, Bex County Courthouse, 100 Delarosa Suite 2.01, San Antonio, Texas.
Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by Commissioner Calver. Any further discussion? Commissioner Lewis Lottis.
Hi, thank you so much for being here. I really appreciated the slide where you had each new building that's being done, that you had the percentage of local participation. That's always something I talk about. I don't know if you have the information now, but if you could get to my office, I'd also like to know within that local participation percentage of swimbees. So thank you so much. Those are really huge, especially 86% at Vida. And part of response to your question, Commissioner Rodriguez, in terms of preventive health, that's why we work so hard, and I specifically fought, to make sure that the Preventive Health Building is on the south side next to the new UHS South Side Hospital, because in 2020 during COVID, as you all know, the south side had the highest percentage rates of COVID and deaths. So other districts, without saying their name, weren't doing their job where I was working at the time. That's why it was so important for us to have our own public health department. Dr. Andrea, I saw her here somewhere, and Dan Curry, I have spoken to them. Somehow, that got lost in translation. But when Judge Wolf and I talked about the importance of having this on the south side, part of that was to have the new department, Dr. Andrea, on the south side as well. And I mentioned that to you, you didn't know what I was talking about, because you're new. So Dan Curry, I don't know where he is, I've spoken to you, Ed. So we need to make sure that some of our full-time staff are on the south side in the new Vida Preventive Health Building for that purposes. Also, I just wanted to make sure I talked to you about this, Ed, but for the public record, that in the new building that you guys are going to build, which is wonderful to make sure that we have mental health beds, because we need that, and we keep talking about it. And so it's taking longer than I would like at SASH or from the state, and so we cannot wait for the state, so we need to do it our own selves. So thank you so much for taking that lead. And of course, the slide that's up now, Precinct One, 24.9%, I am part of that, 24.9%. Again, thank you so much for the care that I continue to get. I was just there yesterday. Have another appointment next week, as I continue to recover from colon cancer. So thank you for the work, and I will be contacting you all for the work that we're going to be doing to make sure there's colon cancer winners more here in Bex County in March. So thank you so much.
Commissioner Calver.
Reed, thank you very much. I want to probably start with you. My comments and my questions are really going to be focused on alleviating the individual constituents in the community's financial pain that's as a result of changes at the federal level. I noted that in your briefing here, you have the fact that premiums are going to increase by 75% for folks who are exchange plan members, and a higher out-of-pocket cost. You mentioned as a solution transitioning them to, you know, Communicare, I mean, CareLink, thank you, other, I've got so many things in my head, sorry about that, I got them mixed up, all their names, I have care in them, so I get it mixed up. But is there a way for us to market? Do we, we, I'm sure we have a database of who those people are, so that we could give them a heads up that, you know, should you come to university for care? for care, you need to be aware effective X date, 75% increase out of your premium. So any thoughts about how we can email, text, mail, market?
I guess we could look at, you know, frequent utilizes. Some people may only come to the ER one time, you know, and they may not be a frequent user, but we could look at, run some reports on frequency of visits and, you know, draw the line if they've had so many visits in the last year, maybe we could notify them somehow. Again, we're hopeful at the federal level, and we've been working with our state delegate to see if we can get those enhanced subsidies continued, or at least maybe have some kind of a phased-out approach as opposed to just dropping off the cliff. So still more to come on that. I guess this fall, we'll find out what's going to happen at the federal level. But we can start coming up with some contingency plans on how to work with those patients to either get them to qualify for CareLink or some other kind of charity program or Medicaid or something.
Yeah, I think it's really important, and I want to emphasize why. Number one cost of bankruptcy for folks is medical expenses. And because when people don't do a lot of questioning of the medical expenses, they just kind of throw their hands at it, and because money is so tight with the cost of everything being so high, it can compound in our community in particular in a big hurry. So, you know, we see those visits you got going up, and as a result, there could be a commensurate impact in the larger community. So I just want us to really kind of do something a little bit out of our DNA and think about how it impacts our users. Let me go to the second one, which you mentioned that in the big baloney bill, I'm going to call it that, there was, you know, there's a lot of changes related to able-bodied, and you mentioned that in this report that, you know, pregnant women are a big part of that, children are a big part of that, so there's less of maybe an impact. But I do think, again, here in helping people's pocketbooks, a marketing program on the renewal commitment out of UHS, how do we, I mean, I'm going to ask you all, maybe it's an Ed, maybe it's a both of you question, how do we work with everyone from the food bank to our clinics, to our clinicians, to our, you know, folks who discharge, to, you know, I don't know, have every form of marketing, guerrilla marketing, you know, this week we, you know, this next two weeks prior to the, I guess there's probably an end date, a closure date of enrollment, right? You know, how do we get you into a, you know, three-month plan to be aware through billboards, online, you know, all kinds of ways? Any thoughts about how do we do this?
Just, and I know Commissioner Clay Flores was that in our VITA, we had an open house over at Texas A&amp;M, and we invited all the non-for-profits and others that are interested in working with us in the VITA building, and we made a lot of connections from the food bank to not-for-profit organizations that we didn't even know existed, that we had case management leadership there and others. And this has been a continual push since that meeting we've had a few months ago down at, on the south side. But it is, we are continually through our leadership, making connections with other opportunities, other organizations here, that we can make sure that what's available, we know about it, and we can refer in through our case management and our CareLink department. And then we also have programs that help people getting them qualified. We actually run anyone who is uninsured or in CareLink to see if they're eligible for other programs through a computer system and through the financial services. So if there is any source of funding or alternative coverage, we can actually get every patient that availability and we run it. And just to share with you, I mean, these subsidies have an effect on all of our hospitals in Bear County. You know, if you're a subsidized patient right now in the exchange program, but you're going to Methodist, Baptist, or Christus, if your subsidy goes away, that's going to be, all the hospitals will be feeling this impact. So we think that this is an opportunity for all of our hospitals and others to put the pressure on our federal levels to get this subsidy continued further.
Well, and while I'm focusing on the person who needs the help, you know that getting them into a proper insurance package is better for our system, right? And so what I'm suggesting to you is probably beyond just the nonprofit conversation. I'm suggesting that, you know, if we're spending a million dollars on marketing a year, let's maybe look at $250,000 for marketing these new able-bodied requirements and other changes so that it just kind of gets that conversation going. Because I think a lot of people don't really think about it until they're in that emergency situation, and if the enrollment date is an issue, it could be too late. So I just want to, I want to work with you all on that. Let me ask you, Reed and Ed, with the seven days a week at the urgent care on 10 in Houston, it closes till eight. If you see a demand for, you know, later hours, how do you, I mean, what are the matrices that you're looking at to determine that you might have a longer hour operation?
It's demand. I mean, we'll certainly look at that. When we look at a clinic, we usually pick eight to eight. We have some clinics that are Express Med that are only open till six or seven in certain days, because we, typical hospitals, everything is very predictable. After you get a couple of months' trend, it's very predictable, people, when they come and how it's going. So if there is a demand over on the Wheatley Clinic, and it looks like we're getting a lot of after-hours type of work or later in the evenings, then we would just work with our physicians in extending those hours later. If we need to, opening them earlier, we would do that. But it's, it's pretty predictable once you can get a period of time. We know our ERs, we know our Express Med clinics, how many they see, what's going on, and it really doesn't change. It increases during flu season, of course, certain seasonal times will see changes, but we'll know probably after a few months what the right times are.
With respect to the Christus acquisition, are you planning capital improvement on the renovations of the, I visited one of my DJs who happened to fall ill, and it's a little dated, but, I mean, it's okay, but it's a little dated.
The board graciously approved 20 million of us to update, to get the equipment updated, because Christus did take almost all the equipment out of the hospital, so we have a shell. We have a couple older CTs, but they're functional, and an MRI and a cath lab. But we do have to buy beds, monitoring equipment, others, and that's scalable. That'll be the first influx. Also, the emergency room or visits to help decompress our main emergency room and the less acute patients, that will require equipment. So we're going through that phase now while we get close to closing the deal. But that's, we do have an initial influx of capital.
But it won't be for a major renovation like we've done on the towers, not for some time? You've got to see what the revenue?
Not for some time. But they're very nice in the sense that Christus had done some upgrades, and the rooms are private rooms. So we do, it's a little better than, I would say, the Rio Tower, what we had years ago when the Sky Tower was built, which were semi-private and quad rooms. So I think we have, I think a lot of cleanup, fix-up, and brightening it up, and we'll make it better. But we do, but there will, to make some major changes would require a significant amount of capital.
When do you think we'll reopen that again?
After the first of the year, but I would say that I wouldn't hold ourselves to that date yet, because we do have to have the state come. They have to re-license us, and once they re-license us, then we have to hire the staff to open it. And then when the staff are open, then the state has to come down right before we open to make sure that everything hasn't changed. So it's dependent on state, but also making sure. Our human resource department has done an unbelievable job hiring the staff in our, in our main campus and in our clinics like Wheatley and VITA. Those are fully staffed, ready to open. And now we threw another, another building into them, and HR is doing everything they can to get out, and they're already starting to do, look at the recruitment of nurses and others. So we feel very confident that we'll get the staff, it's just going to take some time.
Did we offer any transition packages to the Christus employees?
It closed in April, so those people, I think they went to West Over Hills and other locations, but we hope that some people might want to come back who might have taken other jobs.
And the last question, are, obviously, it's a huge thing to get three hospitals and clinics all staffed. I mean, that's quite a Herculean effort, so are you seeing any blips on that pathway?
Blessed by our board, and we've got a great leadership team. I will say that this is, in my whole career, this is abnormal. You do not see three hospitals opening up within a year, a year and a half of each other. And I will tell you, it's going to be a lot of work from our management team, a lot of support of our board of managers. But these opportunities also don't come around often. And I think from what George, Mr. Adams, and the prior board of managers, and our current board of managers, they've set a vision to say that we're going to take care of everyone in Bear County, and we're following through, and we're going to be able to take care of everybody in Bear County and South Texas that needs us. And that's what our staff do every single day, and we're just so proud of our staff and what they do. And they're just, when the announcement got made to staff, the amount of emails and the amount of pride you could see from the 13,000, 12,000 employees was just absolutely incredible. And I'm just so proud of everyone to say, we're going to do it, and we're going to get it done.
Thank you very much, Judge.
Commissioner Moody?
If we could go back to the budget, based on the tax exemptions and rates and everything really quickly. First of all, I just want to thank you all for being here, Ed Reed, your leadership team, for the work you're doing. Obviously, want to thank Mr. Jimmy Hasslocker and Dr. David Cohen for your service on the board and your leadership there. I just wanted to highlight this because, you know, last year, I talked about this more, but annual taxpayer savings of $74 million. I'm glad your numbers matched up with mine. I had it, I had it north of 70 million, and I calculated that as the largest tax cut in Bear County history. So again, I just want to thank you for taking that big step for Bear County taxpayers. I think it was, it was the right move, it was the right time, and it's, it's big, it's notable. The other thing, obviously, I just want to mention, obviously, with the, the tax rates staying the same, evaluations increasing, going to raise about 17 million additional dollars this year, that looks like about 3%, which to me is inflation plus growth, which is reasonable and kind of is the conservative standard when it comes to budgeting. So I think that's, that's very reasonable and fair. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that I know I've brought up to all of you before, but for the court and for everybody's awareness, we've talked about, again, the functions of public health and how UHS ties in with that, whether that's actually, you know, moving some of the county functions underneath the umbrella of UHS, or whether there's just a deeper partnership. I'd just like to continue to look at that option as we go forward. And then the other thing, I'll just highlight, I guess Commissioner Clay Flores stepped out, but her comments about mental health beds. We've had some robust discussions here about the SASH facility, some of the opportunities to renovate some of the buildings there. But we've also had some conversations as it relates to the existing jail, potential future annex, and what that might look like in terms of mental health beds, as well as some square footage for UHS to provide the medical staffing and space to provide the care necessary for inmates as well. And so I hope in the coming months, we can have a robust discussion, dive deeper on that front, and really look at what our options are when it comes to that partnership with the county, with our sheriff's office, and addressing mental health beds in the community. So I hope we can continue to have that conversation. That's all I have, Judge.
Any further comments, questions? I'll call for a vote. I'll alert Commissioner Clay Flores, we're ready to take a vote on this, if she wants to return to the court. All those in favor of the motion signify saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. Good report.
Thank you, and I dropped off so each one of you would have a new booklet on where we are as far as facilities, precincts. I hope you have it in front of you. And as Ed Bannon said to me a couple of days ago, he said, you know, this is already outdated. So we will update it, but thank, thank you all.
Thank you, Jimmy.
For your strong support.
All right. As a point of personal privilege, Commissioner Moody, you've asked, and I'm going to, risking going out over here, you've asked to pull out of consent, item Agenda 45. Agenda 45, I'm alerting, it's approval of memorandum of understanding between Bear County and Alamo Community College District stating that ACCD will allow Bear County parks and rec to determine feasibility approximately 18 acres of north campus location for youth sports field. Mr. Ken McGlamry, I'm alerting you, and I believe we have a citizen to be heard, if Priscilla Camacho, you have three minutes, and I will try to enforce those three minutes, a lot of the lengthy meeting we have today.
Your Honor, I promise I'm going to take far less time than that. Thank you, your Honor. Thank you, Judge Sakai. Thank you, Commissioners Cor, Priscilla Camacho. I am the Chief Legislative Industry and External Relations Officer for the Alamo Colleges District, and super proud to be here on behalf of our chancellor, Dr. Mike Flotes, our Board of Trustees, to really, and really, Commissioner Moody, thank you so much for the vision on this partnership. We know it's the first of many in the midst of all of that. We work with every one of our commissioners and with the judge, and so we're really excited about this partnership. As you know, we own lots of parcels of land. This particular parcel of land is about 145 acres. It has the potential to be its own college campus, but it is going to have an education and training center. And what we're really excited about is the discussions to move forward with a park, a county park. And so we're, we think it goes well with the vision and mission of our institution, the partnership that we've had with the county, and we see a real opportunity to better serve the community, the residents of Bear County in that particular corridor. And as you know, we not only serve Bear County, but we also serve seven other counties in our surrounding area. So we're really excited about this partnership. And Judge, I think I took, yeah, I took a minute. So I learned from the best, Your Honor. So I am going to stop there and happily take any questions or comments.
Let's get Mr. McGlamry up here, and then Commissioner, I'll yield to you if you want to open up your comments or?
Yeah, I'll, some comments. Well, and Ken, I just want to thank you for pushing this forward. I know it's gone quickly. And Priscilla and the team over at Alamo Colleges, appreciate your support on this. So part of the key that was, I'd just like to highlight, so there's actually 18 acres that are in the floodplain, right, on that parcel, which would be unusable for construction, but they're absolutely a great opportunity for sports fields for the northern region of our county. And so we had started having these conversations, I don't know, several months ago, we started talking about it in MOU. Ken and his team have pushed this forward, went back a couple of times just to make sure we got the language right with the lawyers and everything. But I think this is a great opportunity for the community and for the county, and definitely for Precinct Three. And Ken, I don't know if you have anything to add on that from your side?
Well, Ken McGlamry, for the, for the record there, in this 18 acres, the MOU is going to give us the opportunity to do a feasibility study, to see what we can and cannot do out there. And hopefully, we'll be able to get eight 200-foot youth baseball fields and about four youth soccer fields in that area, that'll really, really help out with youth sports. The slots of play are lacking for both baseball and soccer, so this is really going to be a really neat area. Also, too, there's the potential for the YMCA to come out there, so there's even more opportunity for more partnerships. So we're grateful for, for ACC guys helping us get this done, and looking forward to getting it taken care of.
Yeah, no, I was remiss in missing the YMCA, so there's, there's the opportunity for potential trilateral agreement with Alamo Colleges, YMCA, and Bear County. If they end up providing facility there next to the college, that they could also help manage those athletic fields and take some of the burden off Bear County, which would be, be great as well. So look forward to continuing to explore this. Appreciate your willingness to be here this morning. And Ken, thank you again for pushing this forward and getting it done.
Thank you.
Judge, are we going to go ahead and take this for a motion?
I have to ask for a motion.
I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Moody, second by Commissioner Calvert, Mr. Roberson. Take a vote. All right. Any, I'm going to call for a vote on the motion by Commissioner Moody, second by Commissioner Calvert. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion's carry.
Any abstention? Motion carries. Good job. Let's create a new park up on the north side, right?
Thank you so much, Judge. Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say a special thanks to Larry Roberson, the civil DA, for helping push this through, so.
We appreciate the lawyers.
Yeah. Lots of back and forth.
Commissioner Clay Flores, did you want to correct the record on the vote on the issue with UHS? Was the time certain?
Yes, Judge, I stepped out a little bit longer than you and I missed a vote, so please let the record be shown that I voted yes.
Is that all we need to do? Kate, will you reflect the record that Commissioner Clay Flores approved that motion?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Got it. So corrected. All right. We're going to now go to a time certain, so I'm alerting all those. It, it is obviously an issue that is, has, as we can see, a roomful of people. We have a lot of people signed up to speak. Let me go ahead and read for the record what we are taking up at this time. Notice of public consideration. The Commissioners Court has invited public input from interested citizens regarding a proposed order to be considered by the Commissioners Court of Bear County, Texas, which, if adopted, would order an election to be held in Bear County, Texas on November 4th, 2025. On the question of two proposed venue projects, which include improvements to the Freeman Coliseum, Frost Bank Center, and San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo Facilities, and development of a new multipurpose arena for the San Antonio Spurs pursuant to Chapter 3, 3, 4 of the Texas Local Government Code. At this time, each speaker will be allowed three minutes and may designate which item the speaker wishes to speak on. The items the speakers may address the following. One, improvements to the Freeman Coliseum, Frost Bank Center, and San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo Facilities. Or two, development of a new multipurpose arena for the San Antonio Spurs. Or three, the venue projects as a whole. The rules are, the speakers may yield their three minutes to another speaker with permission by the county judge as presiding officer. So if you wish to yield your time, you need to let me know ahead of time, please. In light of the amount of speakers, I will ask that the three-minute limit be enforced at this time. So at this time, we will now open up for public discussion. And at this time, oh, also to court, I want to alert you that after public discussion, I will close the Commissioners Court and ask that we go to executive session. And I'll read into the record why, for the purposes of these, of this particular issue. And then after executive session, we will come back out and take action if appropriate. And then perhaps, depending on time, I'm assuming we will probably have to break for lunch and then we'll come, well, Commissioner, I know. But, and we'll obviously come back to finish the rest of the meeting. And so I hope everybody understands, for those that have yet to sign up to speak, I get, I understand, we have not gone to that. Constables, I haven't forgotten about you. I'm going to try to fit you in and accommodate you because I know y'all are busy and need to get back out and do your job as an elected official, but that's the best I can do for everybody today. So with that, I will call up Peter Holt. And do you want to come? Bobby Pettis?
For your record, Bobby Pettis and Phil Cullen are yielding our time to Peter Holt.
All right. So at this time, I'm calling up Peter Holt, Bobby Pettis, Phil Cullen. Is there anybody else you wish to call up? So that will give you nine minutes, Mr. Peter John Holt.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Might be the first time Bobby ever yielded his time, so might need a special record for that. Well, first, thank you for, to the county, to the rodeo and to the cab for the partnership and collaboration. We've had a wonderful relationship and we look forward to continuing that fruitful partnership. Our formula and structure for said partnership has worked and we believe will continue to work for mutual benefit and positive impact. We're incredibly excited about our next step together. We think that this new reauthorization and improvement of the venue tax that allows for dedicated funds paid, paid by visitors and tourists will help the Frost Bank Center, the rodeo and the stock show, the east side will benefit and will allow for a world-class sports and entertainment arena in our urban core that will transform our city and our county for maximum benefit. The Spurs have committed $500 million plus to the arena. For context, 14 of the 30 NBA teams, the 14 smallest market teams, all have publicly funded arenas. The average is 70% public funds of those 14 smallest arenas. The most recent, Oklahoma City, is 95% funded by public funds. Under our proposed structure, the Spurs will commit close to half of the funds. We are the 27th smallest market in the NBA. This commitment shows our belief in the city, the county, and having a fruitful partnership that benefits all. Today, on behalf of the Spurs, I ask you to formally pass a motion to allow the community members of Bear County to learn about this project, to be part of the process, and ultimately vote yes on a world-class arena in downtown and support the Frost Bank Center and allow for that venue to continue to thrive for decades to come. This is an exciting moment for our community and we are grateful for your leadership and your vision. We ask you today to be bold and to move this forward. And our commitment is that we will push for the maximum positive impact for all community members. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Good afternoon, Judge, members of Commissioners Court. It's a privilege and honor to be here today. Good to see all of you. I've known so many of you for so long. Let me just say thank you. You know, making easy decisions, week in and week out, is simple. Complicated decisions and choices like you're making today that actually, I've said before, are going to be on your term, they're generational decisions. Those are harder to make. We all like, Mike, making decisions that benefit our neighbors, our communities, and things like this. But this opportunity to fund, and I am so excited we're going to be able to support Cody Davenport and the rodeo folks, our folks at the, the Coliseum and support downtown. The Greater San Antonio Chamber believes that they are all connected. It is not one without the other. It is a roadmap between all of them throughout our city. From the Alamo to the Riverwalk, to Hemisphere Park, to New Arena, to over to the west side where we will grow and do things over there that are currently underway, to the east side where the folks, Cody and the team are trying to grow that western heritage and our folks at Joe and Harry have got plans and working together how to make economic development, create opportunity. So many times people say, well, what does this mean? What this means is there will be jobs created with construction. There will be jobs created with entrepreneurs who, for the first time, will step out and take risk and then create generational family wealth and opportunity. And it starts right here today with the decisions you guys are about to make. So Judge, I thank you. I know it's been a deliberative process. I know there's still more to come. I do believe there's accountability and disclosure. I believe we got to include our local businesses every bit as possible, from our small businesses to our homegrown family businesses. They have to be a part of this, from the Frost Bank Center to the Freeman Coliseum to the arena. We've got to do business in San Antonio and we got to do business together. Judge, I thank you for leading the way on this. Thank you for your vote today. Let's continue to make San Antonio someplace exceptional that it's got the reputation to be. With that, I say thank you and appreciate your time and consideration today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. I need clarification for the San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo. I have Cody Davenport, Audrey Smith, and Derek Howard. Do y'all wish to speak individually or? Cody?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to? I've got you for three. Do you want to speak in behalf of all three? Do you have other people? I'm giving, you've got.
I'll go solo.
What's that?
I'll go solo.
Okay. So all those here for the San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo, please come forward. Cody Davenport, I'm giving you nine minutes. You've signed for three people.
Judge Sakai, Commissioners, good to see y'all. Thank you for allowing us in here today. I'll start by echoing what Mr. Holt said. Spurs have been a great partners of ours down there. We're in a beautiful situation in our perspective in the sense that we both have outgrown each other. What a great opportunity for both of us. The San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo and the Spurs have tremendous followings on both sides, and I think it's a great opportunity for our city and for all of us. I want to talk about the rodeo now. We've been there with y'all since 1949. We've been there since the Joe and Harry first wrote ground. And we have always been there. And all we've ever done is continued to grow inside of our process and our partnership together. A few highlights to remind everybody in the room, through our partnership, $279 million have gone back to the youth of Texas through us. Through our operations and your grounds, $279 million. Break it down in an annual, 12.1 million just last year alone. 20,000 students have their education further because of the partnership that we've been able to have. $330 million in economic impact strictly in the month of February. Over 22-day production, $330 million in economic impact down there on those grounds. We're very lucky. Through the growth, we've had lots of outreach to us, people wanting to come, get engaged in the grounds, through the western industry. I'm not talking about rodeo, I'm not talking about rents and repeat the same thing you see every February. I'm talking about a massive industry that's out there. We're contacted on a regular basis to come down there and be a part of. We're offering year-round operations. We're offering to expand, continue the growth of the San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo. We're offering to take the partnership that has been so successful for both sides and expand upon it. Commissioner Calvert, I'm committing to you the east side embracing. We have lots of plans about to take our immediate neighbors and embrace them and make them part of our show. Continue our outreach across the state, continue our outreach across the nation, but take care of our home front as well. These facilities that we're talking about will allow the San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo, which I'm proud to say has won numerous rewards out there, to continue to be in the competitive position across the nation that we're in right now. With these facilities, we can continue dominating that industry and continue bringing in people from other areas, outside money coming into Bear County on those grounds there. All we're asking for is to do an expansion upon what we have provided for years, since the very beginning. Allow us to expand and allow us to grow down there. Our commitment is to grow those things year-round to you guys. I appreciate the support you guys have given us thus far and everything. I know there's been a lot of effort, a lot of dialogue, a lot of talk in this process. I know it's been hard on y'all and I appreciate all the efforts that have gone inside of there. Probably more importantly, on behalf of San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo, we appreciate being partners with you through all those years and all the great things that we were able to accomplish together. So thank you guys much.
Thank you. Let me have Mike Phillips.
Mike, do you wish to?
Judge, we're representing COPS Metro. We have two speakers.
Okay. So do you want to speak as one, Mike, or both of y'all?
Both.
Both, okay. Mike?
Renee Oden, too.
Thank you.
COPS Metro is here to reiterate our stance. We do not support our public money for private development or private benefit. Today, we stand in opposition to a venue tax for yet another arena. Why do we need to spend 300 million for another arena to compete with the Frost Center? We are the third poorest city in the country. We need flood infrastructure. We need investment in our neighborhoods. Where is the public process you assured us of, Judge Sakai? There is no actual cost benefit for this project, no economic analysis, no real economic analysis. This is a blank check to billionaires with our tax money. There should be no rush. No rush. The city looks very likely to wait until next year for their vote. The county should do the same. Taxpayers deserve a better deal.
Ms. Oden?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Judge Sakai, Commissioners, Renee Oden, Macedonia Baptist Church, I'm a COPS Metro leader. It is unconscionable that you want to give this money for an arena when we have people dying from infrastructure or lack thereof, a real divestment from our communities. A gentleman died in his vehicle on Penn Road from floods. We had 13 people that died early June from floods on the north side. Don't tell us this money is only for arenas. Where is your imagination for our families? In early 2000s, we voted on the venue tax where there was community benefit for all districts, for all of us. This deal has no community benefit. Parks, arts, only greed, only greed. When is enough enough? In 20 years, another arena, causing more hurt and suffering for our people, for our families. We're signing up voters and we won't stop because we have an agenda and a better way to spend this money. We will not stop. Today, you have a choice and it's simple. Greed or the citizens of San Antonio? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Your Honor, and good morning Commissioners. Thank you for having us here today. I'm here representing No Project Marvel, which is a coalition of community groups that is asking you to delay the vote until due diligence on this deal can be done. And so I would like to reiterate what COPS Metro just said. There has been no due diligence on this deal. There's been no due diligence on Project Marvel itself, no market study, no risk analysis. There's been no due diligence done on the Frost Center. There's been no study that shows whether San Antonio can support two arenas. And when it comes to the Coliseum, there's been no study that says we can support the Coliseum against an arena, against a new music venue at the Woods Courthouse, against a baseball stadium that's designed to also host concerts, against the Toyota Center, which the county already had to bail out and which is also supposed to be for concerts of the same size. There's also been no consideration of alternative uses for the funding. The county's looking at budget deficits. The city already has budget deficits. We don't know what the federal cuts are going to be. One of the things the venue tax can be used for clearly is aqua for protection. The money that we're spending as a county and city has gone down for that. The city is looking at budget deficits. It's unclear whether they could continue to fund that. We need to be looking at that. It could fund West Side Creeks. It could have funded these ball fields that you just voted to fund through some other method. There are other projects out there that we could do. There is absolutely no rush to do this in November. State law provides that the Spurs lease is enforceable by specific performance. It's funded by the venue tax. The state legislature has said it is not in the public interest to be able to waive performance. So it's enforceable by specific performance. The liquidated damages clause is arguably unenforceable and that leaves us. We're not tying up these funds for another 20 or 30 years without doing our homework on what else could be done with this money. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Vesteer. Steve Vesteer?
Hi. My name is Steve Verstig. I'm just speaking for myself. I just got out of work to try to get over here and say something.
Can you speak up a little bit, please? There you go.
Yeah, sorry. They don't make them go high enough, I guess. First, the Coliseum complex venue project. I need to read because I don't speak that well. The project is event-focused. Are a foreign organization, but they are a private business. Just taking their word for it about how much public funding they need is financially irresponsible. They clearly stalled and came out with the lowest offer they thought would be accepted. Private businesses should fund their businesses with private funds. The Spurs' value has grown 20-fold since 2000, from $189 million to $3.85 billion. These owners can afford to give some of that back. The Spurs could put in $175 million easily over on the east side. They've already said they'd match their $50,000 for the downtown arena with $15,000 more development downtown. Why aren't they doing that over here? The city may not get their bonds on the ballot this fall. People are showing up in force at city council meetings in opposition. The city's leading this arena show. Let them get the project they tied that to approve first. No Project Marvel doesn't mean no Spurs arena. It means don't do it the way the city wants to do it with public funds. The Spurs' value will be 20 times again what it is now when they are looking to build the even next arena 25 years from now. They can afford to invest their own money for that huge game. Let's keep the second proposal to pay for the Spurs' arena off this ballot. It avoids voter confusion and actually lets voters decide on the first proposal on its own merits. Thank you.
Thank you. Antonia Taylor?
Hello, my name is Toni, and I'm a resident of Precinct 3 and a constituent of Grant Moody. I am here today to ask the Bear County Commissioners Court to vote no on using our hotel occupancy tax for the Spurs Entertainment District downtown. Since Project Marvel's inception, there's been a lack of transparency from county and city leaders as our neighbors have been locked out of important conversations. The so-called community engagement sessions have not provided an ample opportunity for our working-class neighbors to comment on the venue's development, but rather you all have chosen to prioritize our business communities that have a firsthand role in gentrification in our city. Over 25 years ago, when the Frost Bank Center was built, the east side was promised a lot: economic development, address infrastructure needs, a new and flourishing community. But time and time again, promises were not kept. Research has shown again and again that stadiums do not provide any sort of economic boost for our communities that surround them, but rather they contribute to gentrification and provide low-wage jobs for our neighbors. Additionally, I question city leaders on how we plan to build arenas, fancy land bridges, convention centers if we literally cannot get around our city right now. I am tired of having our communities sold out time and time again in the name of tourism and economic development. I am tired of having to bend over backwards and spend public monies on an entertainment district that will ultimately benefit the peerholds of our community and that will leach off of San Antonio until there's nothing left. We deserve to have our public funds spent on public transportation, affordable housing. We need a workforce housing for downtown workers who, without them, our cities would simply not exist how it is today. We deserve to have reliable infrastructure so our families are safe, we can commute, and we do not need to die in floods. And I do not believe the arena is a proper way to prioritize these things. Again, as a resident of Bear County and San Antonio, I ask the Commissioners Court to not use public funds to build an entertainment district. As public servants, you all have an opportunity to hold gentrification on the east and west sides of San Antonio and spend our money on projects that will ultimately benefit our communities.
Jackie Ali?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Jacqueline Ali, and I am the Vice President of the United Homeowners Improvement Association, located on the east side. We are a neighborhood association comprising the neighborhoods of Willowood, Meadowview North, and Meadowview Park and surrounding apartments, which lie between the boundaries of Frost Bank Center Drive and Salado Creek. We come before you on behalf of our UHIA in support of the San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo and its mission to expand its operations and programs on and near the Coliseum. They have exhibited a commitment to our community, especially our youth, in many ways from attending neighborhood meetings, offering use of its facilities for neighborhood events, and hosting events for our community such as their Ag Education Days that expose our young people and adults to learning about wildlife, horseback riding, roping, and interacting with and feeding livestock animals. Many of our community have not had opportunities to experience what it's like to train, care for, and feed farm animals. But the San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo have reached out to our communities, providing agricultural education and training opportunities to the younger residents in our community. We are in support of their being able to improve and expand the Coliseum and the surrounding area to provide more of these experiences, upgrade their facilities, and host year-long events that will hopefully bring more visitors and participants to the east side venue. This will not only benefit our community and neighborhoods, but hopefully the San Antonio community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse Casades?
Good morning, Judge Sekai and Commissioner Corre. Thank you guys for having us here today to discuss on the very important topic of the venue proposal downtown for the sports and entertainment district. I am Jesse Casades. I've been, I live in D1. I'm a born and raised San Antonian, and I can see the histories the 1968 World's Fair did to San Antonio and what this will bring to San Antonio. With that, I founded the Downtown Neighborhood Association to really immerse myself in our community. This is home. This is where we are going to thrive, both for locals and visitors alike. With that, you know, we've seen what the pearl has come to. We see what it was before and how it really made a community thrive. And with that, you know, we really do see what the rodeo is doing and support and all the things that they are doing. And with the land bridge and with the sports and entertainment district, we've seen what Hemisphere has done to our community, and we just see the small little pocket of what the folks of, with the Hemisphere Commission and all of the wonderful things they are doing to our city, and how can we really can make that a huge thing for San Antonio. You know, as far as our economic impacts, you know, the final four brought in over $400 million to our local economy. And if we are not staying updated with our facilities, if we don't have a place for those types of events to call home, we are going to get surpassed. Austin is currently having their convention center renovated. So is Houston, and we need to be keeping up with those times. San Antonio is projected to become the sixth-largest city in the United States, surpassing Philadelphia, and that will be happening very soon. We need to keep up. As a young professional that works and lives downtown, that breathes San Antonio, this is going to be necessary for us to keep up with our young talent and our young professionals. We will, you know, find a solution for affordable housing, homelessness, and really room for creative innovations. And so, like Hemisphere did and as we've seen in the decades before us, the leaders before us, and where we can actually walk and breathe today because of their decision-making, we hope that you will follow in their leadership and footsteps as well. And let this be your legacy for San Antonio for generations to come. So, I definitely support this project, and I ask you, as my final message, please take this bold step, be thoughtful, and these actions will definitely lead for us for generations to come. So, I thank you for your time.
Carolina Calderon?
Hello, my name is Carolina Calderon, and I'm a proud resident of downtown San Antonio, living in District 2. I'm here today to express my enthusiasm and support for the development of the project as a whole. As someone who lives and works in the heart of the city, I see firsthand the potential this project has to energize our community, not just economically, but socially and culturally. This kind of growth is exactly what San Antonio needs to continue thriving as a vibrant, forward-moving city. I'm excited for what this means for our future, from job creations to increased tourism to more reasons for residents like me to stay invested in long-term places we call home. It makes me proud to be a part of San Antonio and even more motivated to contribute to its continuing success. Thank you, Court, Commissioners, Court, sorry, and Court Judge for your time and your leadership. Appreciate it.
Nora Sophia?
Good morning, everyone. I'm so glad Caroline is almost the same height as me for the microphone. I stand before you as a native San Antonian that almost wasn't. And what I mean by that is my parents were both born in Corpus Christi in the 1930s. The only reason we ended up here is because my father trained at Lackland for the Air Force and fell in love with the most beautiful city. And when he went home to tell my mother after the Air Force that we were moving to San Antonio, he said it's because San Antonio is going to evolve while Corpus will not. I kind of think that's true today, even though all my relatives are still in Corpus. But the thing is, for me, I fell in love with the city too as a little girl. My parents still, at 91 and 92, come down every Sunday to stroll through downtown. They love the energy. They love the vibrance. My father was tickled in 1968 with the World's Fair because he said San Antonio would evolve. I moved away for a short time. I had to find my husband in another state. Maybe that's another agenda. But when I came back, I came back to downtown. And I came back to downtown because I saw something different. I saw potential, and I saw a lot of things changing and moving. And so, my hope is that for the project as a whole, we're not asking our visitors to pay for us to have a better quality of life. What we're asking for is to have a better quality of life created to attract more visitors and more business. Thank you so much.
Betty Boucher? Betty needs some help?
Judge, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Betty Boucher, First Vice President of the San Antonio Conservation Society. The Conservation Society of San Antonio has been investing in preservation of historic homes and buildings on the east side of San Antonio for decades. Annually, the society has given up to $100,000 per year in building grants to private or public owners who actively engage in preserving historic elements of their buildings. The public purpose of these grants are to allow community members to enjoy and learn about our community's cultural heritage as told through the historic facades of the built environment. If Commissioners Corre decides to call a bond issue to engage in economic development on the east side of San Antonio, we encourage strong consideration be given to incorporating preservation of cultural heritage evident in the buildings into any plans implemented with bond funds. There are many important historic structures throughout the east side of San Antonio. This inventory of significant sites provide one of the guiding, should provide one of the guiding documents for decisions regarding new development. The Texas Historical Commission has identified the Baptist Settlement as a highly valued but undertold story in Bear County. They have called for further research and interpretation of this area. This is a large urban area where formerly enslaved persons, established homes, neighborhoods, businesses, and multiple churches. After Juneteenth, many freemen's towns appeared throughout Texas. In San Antonio, it was the Baptist Settlement, where a new community established its cultural heritage and developed a thriving economy. The Conservation Society intends to continue investing in the preservation of historic buildings on the east side. We would be pleased to work in close coordination with Bear County for east side economic development plans if the county decides to proceed in that direction. I have a copy of this letter from our President Louis Vetter for each of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Gregory?
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Andrew. I live in Precinct 3, just east of the International Airport. Commissioner Moody is my Commissioner. Come up here today to talk about that. We are a city of stadiums, including one that is highly recognizable as part of our city skyline. And yet, these stadiums struggle to retain resident performers and organizations. There's a constant need to find events, musical tours, et cetera. For instance, to fill the Alamo Dome, even when then those events do not make up for the operating cost of the facility. We've heard promises of long-term relationships before. We've heard, we've heard promises of long-term relationships today. And yet, there's only one large, big league professional sports team organization in the city. Them, as well as the minor league teams that we have here and that have had here, the Missions, the Football Club, the Rampage, are all controlled by the same people. This is effectively a sports entertainment monopoly. They are aware of this dynamic, and they are squeezing everything they can out of the city and the county, the people of the city, of the county, for all that they can. Project Marvel will not change this dynamic. It would only saddle the people with another debt item, expense, as Grant Moody has mentioned in the last item we had before this topic that they're concerned about. Even if it comes from a tax that is, comes from an hotel occupancy, that can be used in other places, in better places. All this construction planned will overwhelmingly facilitate the flow of money from Spurs fans to the Spurs organization. For this reason, these construction projects need to be funded solely by the Spurs organization with no public funds. Raising public funds to line the pockets of private sports entertainment organizations should not be tolerated. It is blatantly obvious that they're unpopular, that these planning procedures are going behind closed doors. Unfortunately, some public officials, some city managerial staff have determined that dollars have as much of a voting say as the citizens. Project Marvel is a funnel for that reason. It is a funnel of funds to the Spurs organization. So, my request to you is to take the proposal as written currently and throw it in the trash and come back something that actually serves the people of San Antonio. Thank you.
Eshan Baker?
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. My name is Eshan, and based on my experience living on the east side and working in the proposed sports and entertainment district footprint, I oppose voting to use any public funds for venue projects because it continues... because it continues a long pattern of displacement and exploitation. The associated gentrification with this project is rooted in the same profit-driven logic that has displaced working families for generations in cities all around the world. Projects like this hand public resources to private developers while pushing out the very people who make tourist industry profits possible, the cooks, hotel staff, and construction workers. Aside from degrading conditions, I want to know what guaranteed benefits hardworking citizens will receive. I'm tired of being a city that gloats about how many low-wage labor jobs we have to offer and continues to gloss over ongoing issues to suit profitability. We have discussed these concerns before. The last two stadiums were sold as opportunities to generate meaningful economic and fiscal returns, but each time they failed to deliver for working families. Our neighbors have continued to face low wages, rising rents, and the constant threat of being priced out. The evidence shows that this new district will only accelerate displacement while pandering to developers. If we want to keep up with other major cities, we need to ask who is being left behind. Imagine being known as a city that prioritizes its residents before industry, taking an active role in eradicating generational poverty by laying a strong foundation based on needs, not wants. True investment in San Antonio means paying attention to its people, with housing they can afford and wages they can survive on. This project has not demonstrated its ability to offer this. And in a state like Texas where rent control is prohibited, approving this plan without real protections would be irresponsible and exacerbate the existing housing crisis. I'd rather use our valuable efforts to talk about plans for limits on short-term rentals or measures to prevent rent spikes. These are efforts that would actually pave the way for generational wealth. I ask that we learn from our mistakes and reject consideration to use hotel occupancy fund, tax funds for these inefficient and unproductive venue projects. This is an opportunity to instead address existing infrastructure and truly improve the quality of life for the people who call San Antonio home. Thank you.
Thank you. Grayson Maru.
Hello, my name is Grayson and I'm a resident of Precinct 2 and a constituent of Justin Rodriguez. I'm here as a constituent to express that I do not want public money spent on these projects and that these questions should not be put on the ballot this November. The money that would fund these projects is fundamentally produced by the labor of San Antonio workers and should be used to improve the lives of and meet the needs of our people. Research and experience show that stadium projects do not bring economic growth. What it will bring is gentrification and displacement to already disenfranchised communities. Our elected officials should be embarrassed at the lack of democratic engagement in this process is indicative of a government that serves the interests of the wealthy and not the interests of working people. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Mock.
Hi, I'm here to speak about my opposition to using the hotel occupancy tax for the proposed improvements to downtown venues and the building of another Spurs, Spurs stadium, otherwise known as Project Marvel. I live on the east side and I'm a constituent of Precinct 4 and I will be affected by this project. I'm here because I and many other people in this city think it is appalling that this project has moved along as far as it has without sufficient community involvement, without adequate opportunities for residents to democratically participate in decision-making and without any care for the people that would be most impacted by this project. Not to mention the fact that decades of research has shown that stadiums are bad investments for cities whose returns never live up to what is promised in the beginning by developers and economists. With this development will come gentrification, increases in property taxes, and the further disenfranchisement of the east side following generations of broken promises. Over 50% of people in San Antonio are cost-burdened, which means that they spend more than 30% of their income towards housing. Of that 30%, or of that 50%, half are significantly cost-burdened, which means that they pay over 50% of their income towards housing costs. For every $100 increase in housing costs, houselessness increases by 9%, which is a crazy number. So I really urge you all to think about how the policies that are created here will actually impact people's lives. And I think that the way that this project has been introduced to the public is a farce that has been enacted to give it the veneer of legitimacy and democratic consent. This project is very transparently the product of backdoor deals between city officials and developers to line their pockets and push people out of their homes in the name of profit. Affordable housing and workforce housing for downtown workers whose labor creates the wealth that pays for projects like this should be the cornerstone of this project, not an afterthought. And the county should not be giving public money to billionaires like Peter Holt here who use the threat of revoking their business in San Antonio to force unpopular policy on the rest of us. Gentrification is a process that results from policy choices by people like you and it robs families of their homes that they lived in for generations, steals their livelihoods, and destroys neighborhoods forever. It is preventable and you have a responsibility to the people who elected you to do everything you can to prevent it. Thank you.
Thank you. Letitia Vella.
Hello, I'm Letitia Vella. I live in the Medical Center area, so in a new housing, senior housing, living community that was done with public funding on a vote. Those are the kind of projects that the city needs. It has helped me and several where I live. And so I want to encourage you to make those kinds of decisions for the city and keep, keep having those opportunities for people who are struggling. So I am a lifelong resident of San Antonio. Well, I actually did leave for a little while and I got to see other places that were better than San Antonio. And I'm opposed to the new arena and the venue project as a whole. I don't think that we've been good stewards of downtown. I've been here a long time, so I saw downtown when it was, when it had better days. This new stuff just really doesn't work. I tried to drive from the library to the south, the south side of downtown, and it was a horrible drive down, down St. Mary Street. I mean, everything is convoluted downtown. We're talking about this venue place, but we're not talking about what we do have that we need to uplift. At the Hemisphere area, we have Unam and the Mexican consulate that have buildings there. They do excellent programming. We're just going to tear up everything around them and make them suffer like we've done all around this city for all kinds of businesses. And we're never, and we're not, and we're not talking about helping them. Right now, the Magic Theater is in dire straits as well. They have no air conditioning, they have no access on Alamo Street. You come down to the east side, to the west side of downtown and both Market Square facilities have no air conditioning. They've never been upgraded and it's horrible. Just, you, you, you need to take a look at those, at those situations. Down the street a little further to the west, you have an addiction and houseless community living on the streets. But yet we're talking about a new sports arena. That does not make any kind of sense. And I think that, you know, it's long enough that the development community has had a stranglehold on us as a city and we need to do better. Thank you.
Basima Abusat.
Hello, my name is Basima. I'm a constituent of Justin Rodriguez in Precinct 2. I'm here to speak today in opposition to any public funding being used for Project Marvel, including revenue from the hotel occupancy tax. Peter Holt's statement earlier was full of contradictions. He stands in front of the court and speaks of the successes between the city and the Spurs. He speaks in front of the court of the supposed successes of the Frost Bank Center. Yet in the media, he condemns the Spurs fan experience. He speaks ill of the Frost Bank Center. He diminishes that same success that he brings up in the court. Not even Peter Holt can deny the failure that was the Frost Bank Center. So don't make that same mistake again. The Spurs company has pledged $500 million for a project that will ultimately cost upwards of $5 billion, not to mention inevitable delays that come with these extremely bloated projects that will increase costs even more with no return for the citizens of San Antonio. This is barely a drop in the bucket and the citizens of San Antonio should not have to bankroll an ego project that gives us nothing. Peter Holt and his millionaire friends are asking you to ignore our past mistakes and to ignore the extensive research that shows sports stadiums are not full-time, well-paying jobs. They do not benefit the residents of those neighborhoods in the stadium, in the neighborhoods that the stadiums are being built in. Just ask the east side residents if the Frost Bank Center delivered on the promises that were made in the 90s. Oh wait, y'all did. Tommy Calvert hosted those so-called community engagement sessions that proved that east side citizens are not content with this project and do not approve. Make the decision to represent the interests of your constituents. Make the decision to vote no on any public funds being used for Project Marvel.
Thank you. Is it Jacob Tucker?
I'm Jake Tucker with Pueblo Over Profit, a volunteer organization advocating against policies that lead to gentrification and displacement while promoting housing as a human right. We call on this court to reject this project negotiated behind closed doors without meeting meaningful public input. Specifically, we call on you to reject any public funding for a new Spurs arena. Over the past several months, I've been to one of Commissioner Calvert's town halls, three of the community engagement sessions hosted by Able City, and the recent special session of City Council. In each instance, the public sentiment was overwhelmingly distrustful of the current plans for a sports and entertainment district. Further, the extensive research regarding public funding for sports stadiums is very clear that it's almost always a terrible investment of public funding, generating far less economic benefit to the public than alternatives offering better employment opportunities for workers and a longer-term commitment. Stadiums offer primarily temporary, part-time, and low-wage jobs. In his testimony, Peter Holt, Chairman of the Spurs, detailed the city's paying over half of the construction costs of new stadiums, citing our small market as a reason to pay up. We're also one of the poorest cities per capita of NBA cities. Is that another reason why we should make bad economic decisions? So constituents have overwhelmingly spoken against this. If the evidence shows these deals are a poor use of public dollars and if the people you serve have far more needs than replacing a perfectly acceptable stadium, then what public-serving reason is there to pony up for our public money? To maintain an abusive relationship with an ownership group holding us hostage unless we give the richest among us our public dollars? We reject this corrupt race-to-the-bottom approach arising every couple decades and calling you to use our public money for public good. Since I have a minute left, like, I really want to reject this idea that we spend, like, that this, this funding comes from tourists, right? Because as was mentioned before, and I worked for almost a decade in the hotel industry, like, that, that revenue is created by the workers who work those jobs. And just speaking from experience, until my, my hotel became a union hotel, those jobs are abusive, they're low-wage, and I mean, we, they would work us 12, 14, 16, 18 hours a night to get things ready for, for the next day and so on. And so we need to fight for better jobs in San Antonio, not using the, the, the revenues that come in to create more of these same kind of jobs. We need to make sure that anything that gets any money from here provides a decent, dignified, professional career for the people working those jobs and not just low-wage, terrible, body-breaking jobs that, that are currently on offer from the hotel stuff downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Finger.
Judge Sakai, other members of the County Commissioners Court. For the record, my name is Jack M. Finger. You know, in a county of a couple million people, I must be one of the very few that seem to see this big elephant in the room, willing to expose it. So, well, here goes. Ready, fire, aim. Yuck. Why do the Spurs remind me of, to put it gently, a lady of the evening who hops from customer to customer looking for the best deal? I kid you not. It was back in 93, they said that the, the Hemisphere Arena, I'm sorry, is just too loud, too outdated. We need an Alamo Dome. And so what did we do? We foolishly gave them an Alamo Dome and tore down that still useful Hemisphere Arena. And about seven years later, they, they come back and say, uh, Alamo Dome just, 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 just doesn't meet our needs there. We, we need, we need an AT&amp;T center. Yes, and if you build an AT&amp;T center, you just watch, you build it and they will come. Those businesses will flourish like anything on the east side. That sure worked out, didn't it, there? Yeah. So, so what did we do? We built them an AT&amp;T center, soon to be named the Frost Bank Center. And then just a couple of decades later, they said, oh God, this, we need to keep up with the Joneses all around the country. We need a new stadium and right close to where the old Hemisphere Arena is, just inches away from where it was. Yeah, and if you don't give it to us, well, we'd sure hate to leave from 90 miles up the road for Austin. Oh yeah. Well, here's the point. If, if they're a bunch of dummies, yes, dummies 90 miles away who are willing to take on the Spurs team. I mean, what was their whopping winning record last year? I think it was 44%? Yeah, well, maybe they just had a bad year. What was it the year before? A whopping 24%. Yep. The, let me just say that the Spurs, as bad as they are, they know how to play this game and they're better at it than you guys are. Please, don't fall for this stuff. Yeah, I mean, the Spurs know how to get the money if they really need it. And if they're going, if they say they need to just got to move on, all, all I can say is, go Spurs, go! Far, far away. Yes. Thank you.
All right, that concludes all those that signed up. If you didn't sign up, I, you, is there anybody here that signed up that I did not call? All right. That concludes the citizens to be heard on this specific issue. I did indicate that we would go to executive, but there has been a request to consider the consent agenda and try to get that out. So at this time, let's see what matters need to be pulled. Vote on the remaining issues, consent. I think we also have the minutes and then the rest of the citizens to be heard. So I'm doing my best. We're, we're at the noon hour, so we will go to executive session on the time certain, on the venue tax projects. And then we will then perhaps break for lunch and then come back out after that. So I'm doing my very best to accommodate everyone's presence here and to kind of signal when we can take up. So at this time, I will ask with consent to the court that we hold the time certain in abeyance for an hour. We now move to Agenda Item 5. Request for Commissioners Court to identify items from the consent agenda for additional discussion and to approve remaining consent agenda items. Commissioner Clay Flores, is there any matters?
I'd like to pull 46.
46. Anything else? Commissioner Rodriguez? Commissioner Rodriguez?
I'm good, sir.
Commissioner Moody?
I'd like to pull item 37.
37. Okay.
Nothing for me, Jim.
Commissioner Calvert? All right. So, we have just two matters. Is there a motion to approve the consent?
Absolutely.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by Commissioner Clay, Commissioner Clay Flores. All those called for a vote, all those in favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Well, I'm looking at the court. Do you want to take up the remaining, or you want to?
Let's do the two.
Well, let's take the two items for individual considerations, and then we'll try to finish. Then, we'll go to executive. Larry?
Judge, it's up to you. If you want to defer those two items until after, that's completely up to the court.
Yeah, we'll do that, maybe take up the citizens first.
Let's go to citizens. So, all right?
Let's get it over with.
Okay, so, if we go in order, I will then take up Agenda Item 6, filing for the record or filing legal and administrative documents or directing the criminal district attorney's office to take action if necessary, A through I. We'll take up Agenda Item 7, Commissioners Court Minutes for Tuesday, July 8th. Motion approved. Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by Commissioner Calvert. All those in favor of the motion approved minutes, signature by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. We'll now go to Agenda Item number 8, Citizens to be Heard. All right, we do have quite a few. I'll take up the constables, if they're still here. Constable Tejada, precinct 1.
Judge, Commissioners? I just wanted to take just a few minutes. I was going to say good morning, but it's kind of...
No more.
I gave you packets, and I'm just going to read. The first section is a memo sent to the Budget Director, Mr. David Smith, offering an account of the pending needs and in the upcoming fiscal year. Second is a section for the two bills that are already passed. Apparently, some of the people in the Budget Office weren't aware of the passing. One is going to be the squatter law, SB 1333. It's effective 20, in September of 2025. And also SB 38, the speedy process related to evictions. That'll be the start of the year. The third section, update and verification of civil process that my office has executed from October 2024 to July 2025. Reports all come from the Odyssey and the Civil Service System. Fourth section is a sample of breakdown in detail of the process of FEND or Forced Entry and Detainer. What I'm explaining there is how long it takes for the paperwork to come from the JP Court, how long it takes for the officers to get the paperwork, and of course, in January, it's going to change from 10 days to five days. So, it's going to expedite the eviction process. Fifth section is a letter from the Texas Attorney General address to the county judge related to our performance. A few years back, we started working better with the Attorney General's Office, and we started serving more of that process. Of course, they emailed the information, we printed out, and then we get it served and returned. So, everything has to have due diligence of how many attempts. Usually, they ask us to continue to try to serve this process. The JP Courts usually ask at least three times to try to serve process. So, it takes a lot of background and a lot of traveling and so on. The sixth section is details, summary of the revenue generated by my office from October 2024 to 2025 July. I do hope the Commissioners Court will take into account the changes, the laws, my need to have my personnel to properly execute these documents. I've been requested to work warrants, and the last time I did this was a few years ago. I proposed two clerks and also four officers. Two officers were going to work during the day, and two were going to work at night. So, right now, the complication is on evictions, also, we run into wanted people, of course, executing warrants. And many are felony, A, B, C, you know, so it all depends on the individuals that we're evicting from their homes or apartments. So, right now, I'm dearly needing these officers to do a proper job. The percentage is increasing every year. It's been increasing for the last few years. So, I'm not asking for, you know, a whole bunch. Each of these officers that are serving process will pay for themselves for the amount of process they're serving, because with any document, you know, they get, the Bear County gets paid for it. Also, you can adjust on how much you pay for the civil process, because every year, we go and meet and discuss what price each document is going to be costing. So, the population is growing, my area is exploding, so I'm not asking for, to where, I'm just wanting extra personnel. All these people are going to be working. All these people are going to be serving process. And the big thing is going to be safety. Now, we're having to send officers, maybe two or three, to an eviction instead of just one because of their safety. A lot of times, we run into difficult matters, people that are wanted on felonies and so on. So, we not only have to evict them, but we also have to arrest them, and that takes time. I'm willing to work the Class A and B warrants, but it's on the approval of Commissioners Court. We need to develop a process of, the process that I developed years ago on Class C, wrap it up, on Class C misdemeanors, was to take the individuals straight to the JP instead of booking them at the MAGS office. So, that generated a lot of revenue. But I thank you for your time. I thank you for working with me, and hopefully, with Mr. Smith, we can work together and accomplish something. I know they recommended two officers, but we really need the personnel. To do an adequate job, we need the personnel. Thank you.
Thank you. Constable Vazquez.
She had to leave. She had an emergency.
Constable Vavitch, I'm allowing you to come back and speak for three minutes.
Good afternoon, Judge.
Good afternoon.
Members of the court. This morning, we talked a little bit about the DA's office using unexpended salary funds redirected to his office. Unfortunately, the same application of the law was denied to Precinct 3 to use unexpended salary funds to move to other needs within Precinct 3. My question would be, why was there a difference in handling these two issues? Sir, Judge Sakai, you did well in your first year, meeting with us and working towards several critical goals, addressing past injustices, along with the constables, even offering your cell number and an invitation to talk or meet anytime, but that has not yet happened. I've sent emails, requested meetings with you and your chief of staff without result. Staff recently set a meeting date for yourself and the constables, and when I sent them a letter two days ahead of the meeting stating that I wanted to address the perception of a lack of transparency and a request of your staff to obey the Texas Constitution and law, the meeting was canceled and was never rescheduled. This court additionally had decided to vote against adding an additional SRIO to our North Schools, protecting these kids in the North, the Comal Independent School District, and tabled it never to revisit that particular decision. That's a position fully paid for by the Comal Independent School District. Budget is a continuing issue. I understand that we have competing needs, and they get direction from the court on a lot of different areas, but one area that should not be occurring is micromanaging the word and the effects inside an elected official's office. That is strictly supposed to be their sphere of influence that no other elected official, let alone staff of an elected official, should be intruding on. They should not substitute their judgment for mine in the case of Precinct 3. I would prefer to get two necessary motorcycles to do traffic enforcement. I've used them in the past in Precinct 3, but the staff raised concerns about safety and that a policy needs to be created for the use of police motorcycles. That has not occurred, as far as I know. The safety issue is a false narrative, as the BCSO still operates 7 to 9 BMW motorcycles, and our training is identical to that of the Bear County Sheriff's Office. But the denied chain, where we will not be allowed to use motorcycles, actually has a hidden cost, not just in operating expenses, but it also shifts the cost to taxpayers in about $300,000 in incidental fine revenue over three years. That's the difference in the productivity of a motor unit and somebody in a four-wheel-drive vehicle. A traffic unit that can be getting into these school zones and these small compartmented areas safely is a motorcycle. So, that money that would have been brought in to discourage people from speeding in school zones, that violators would have had to pay the cost of law enforcement. Instead, now, it shifted that cost of law enforcement to the law-abiding citizens.
Judge, Commissioners, time is expired.
Time's up. Constable, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Penny Hallpenny.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to, well, not morning, afternoon now, for allowing me to speak. My name is Penny Hallpenny, and I'm speaking to you in regarding to the private road in Bear County that is owned by my daughters Ellen Brooker, Margaret Marie Ferguson, my nephew, Johnny Hallpenny, and great niece Sydney Hallpenny, who is a daughter of my nephew, David Ray Hallpenny, my brother's youngest son. I was appointed administratrix of the Hallpenny estate property upon my father's passing in 1976 until my brother was released from prison in 1978. Thereafter, I served only as needed, as requested by those named above. Upon my brother's release from prison in 1978, he mainly lived out of state, and when unavailable, asked me to continue to handling any land issues on his behalf. I consulted him regularly in regarding every land deed given and every right-of-way conveyance, as he was a primary landowner, and I was acting on his and my daughter's behalf. For as my father's will, per my father's will, my eldest daughter Margaret turned 23 in 1984, and my youngest daughter Ellen turned 23 in 1986, at which time, they both became co-owners and with full rights of signatory on the property of my father's. The timeline created is based on the Bear County records. In 2020, a new subdivision was being constructed behind the Hallpenny property in question. By 2023, the new subdivision began driving on the Hallpenny Road, which is a private road. One of the owners, Ms. Smith, who lives there and has a right-of-way conveyance, began complaining to the city of Helotus and to Bear County. I accompanied her in two trips and stood by her, also voicing my concerns about the intrusion on behalf of other landowners. When the complaints fall on deaf ears, on her own, Ms. Smith began digging through public records in Bear County regarding the road to find out how to protect her right-of-way and see if she and other ranchette owners could fight the county on the traffic coming from McCray, McCrory subdivision via Ansley Cross onto Sunset Hill. It is through her investigation that she learned of a document filed in 1993, which was perpetrated, which was purported, signed and notarized in 1977 by me. Not only did I never create this document, but I never signed such a document, nor did I ever file such a document with the county. And when I asked to see the original document to verify that, no one could produce the document for me or Mrs. Smith's review. After several attempts, and since Judge Sakai would not...
Ms. Hallpenny, I'm going to have to cut you off, but I want to be sensitive to you. I also noticed I have Johnny Hallpenny, I got Margaret Ferguson, Ellen Brooker. I assume that's all of you right there?
Yes.
Can I just ask, where at precinct is the property that you are discussing?
It's...
And if we could just get staff?
In the Helotus area.
The what?
The Helotus.
What precinct? Commissioners, is this on your radar? Can we have staff help her?
Yeah, I think, I think we've, you were here before, is that right, ma'am? And I think...
That was on another, another agenda, yes, sir. And it's just a case that the county took over a road that was a private road, using my name, as if I gave the county the road, which was an illegal procedure.
Is that Public Works?
Is that Art?
Art Reinhardt, where are you, Art Reinhardt? I need you to talk, would the family talk to Public Works, please? I think it's in precinct 2, precinct 3.
We'd really like to address the Commissioners regarding this, because she's already tried to talk to Mr. Whiteheart.
Commissioner Moody?
Well, I mean, I'm generally aware of the issue. My staff has been working with you for a very long time.
No, they have not been working with me on this particular...
This is citizens to be heard.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Help us out, and we're not going to, but I'm trying to get you on the, so, help us out. Where can we move forward?
Well, how about when you guys step away, you can sit with Art and Jim, Commissioner Rodriguez, if you want to have somebody involved in that conversation, but...
Yeah, I can have Francesca involved. I think they're Precinct 3 residents, but we're happy to coordinate with you.
Okay. Could you do that, please? And if you're not happy, obviously, you're invited back at the next Commissioners Court meeting to let us know.
I appreciate it.
I'm from a town, and I came down just for this meeting.
Okay, so, Ms. Hallpenny, you're done. Who are you?
I'm Margaret Ferguson.
All right, Ms. Booker, you got your three minutes.
Ellen, Margaret Ferguson.
Margaret Ferguson, yes.
Oh, you're Ferguson, Ms. Ferguson.
I'm Margaret Ferguson. I'm here speaking about concerns regarding the private road in Bear County that I co-own. The following timeline occurred according to your own Commissioners Court and Public Works records. In February 1992, Public Works amended procedures for assessing cost of improving roads and subdivisions with the court order, Article 2.201. One or more of the record owners of the subdivision must deliver to the department a written request to be considered for improvements to the roads and subdivision and/or access road thereto and assessments. March 30, 1993, after 16 years of maintaining gravel roads, the Sunset Valley Ranchet property owners applied to the county for road improvements. The Hallpenny family is not consulted or included in the negotiations. A public hearing is scheduled for May 18, 1993. May 18, 1993, a public meeting is held regarding the Sunset Valley Ranchet subdivision property owner's application for road improvements. However, no action is recorded in the Commissioners Court Minutes, yet paperwork from a September 27, 1995 Commissioners Court meeting states that an election was ordered at this time. June 29, 1993, results of an election were declared on Commissioners Court and a majority of record owners of the square footage of the subdivision favored assessments and road improvements. The Commissioners Court records no actual records of the election of the homeowners. July 19, 1993, Public Works declares the results of the election to the Commissioners Court from June 22, 1993, yet there are no County Commissioners Minutes for this date recording regarding the vote by the ranchette property owners. July 20, 1993, at a regular meeting of the Commissioners Court of Bear County, it is ordered that Public Works purchase from Penelope Hallpenny de Dominguez, administratrix of the estate of David Lister Hallpenny, attractive land for the right-of-way purchase for $10 attractive land for the right-of-way purchase for $10, also orders the deed of 7.987 acres of land to be taken into the name of Bear County and to be recorded in the real property record of Bear County. The Hall Penny landowners aren't notified. October 5, 1993, a mysterious document is filed with the county that has a signature notarized in 1997, giving the property to Bear County. The Hall Penny landowners aren't notified. So not only does the court order Public Works to take a property without public notification of any of the landowners 32 years ago, but they took it by a fraudulent document, then made the landowners that are there now pay to have a road paved that is now a public road. There are too many contradictions in your own timeline. The 32 years have passed. The statute of limitations on discovering a fraudulent document is four years and the clock is ticking. We now welcome the opportunity to discuss this matter further. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Did the others, go ahead.
Good afternoon. I'll make this brief. We believe there was fraudulent acquisition of our private road and I think we heard the bishop in his closing say love over power. So we ask that we be heard on this subject. This has nothing to do with the pipeline. This has to do with our ownership of a private road that was fraudulently taken and we're calling it out and we want to be met and heard about this with a reasonable resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes ma'am.
My name is Ellen Brooker and I'm speaking to you today regarding a private road in Bear County that I'm also a co-owner of. It was taken away from us fraudulently in 1993 without my or any of the other co-owners' permission or knowledge. Since the fraudulent document was unearthed from our own county records with the authority of other co-owners, my mother Penny Hall Penny had a meeting with new Bear County Works Director, Mr. Reinhold, regarding this matter to no avail. She's had made numerous attempts to meet with Judge Sakai and has repeatedly been denied access. We now request a private meeting with the Commissioners or their office to discuss this matter and present the documents that prove this fraud. Every document we've recovered is in the Bear County records. The timeline we've created is based on these records, is accurate and irrefutable. The sole owners of the property never signed or transferred any deed to the county, nor would we have ever done so. The falsified document was used for this transfer was dated 1977. It was notarized in 1977 by Penny Hall Penny de Dominguez in 1977. The transfer deed was filed in 1993 with these 1977 signatures. If we are not allowed to meet with the Commissioners to discuss this matter, then we have no choice but to further follow the advice given to us in December as outlined in the last correspondence from Cynthia Cos, Director of Community Engagement located in Judge Sakai's office. She emailed my mother Penny Hall Penny and I quote, "If an individual is alleging that this deed recorded in their office is fraudulent, you will need to seek your local law enforcement's help." And then she provided us with a direct number. We give the Commissioners Court seven days to review this matter in order to return the property rights of this private road to the rightful owners. If you do not, then we will seek legal action after the seven days have passed. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay. I hear you clearly then. I want to, in light of that last statement, I'm advising legal counsel that we should treat this as a claim against the county and we should either be prepared to respond or respond accordingly. All right? So I would ask that somebody confer and if they have a claim to assert, let's assert it and let the process continue. All right?
Thank you.
That's the best we can do for you today. All right, that concludes Citizens to Be Heard. All right. So, okay, so, right now? We're gonna take that afterwards. Okay, there's another point of order, point of privilege, 84. I'm gonna go, if there's no objection, let's take up Agenda Item 84 out of individual agenda items. Discussion appropriate action related, authorizing Bear County to convey the property described as NCB 132, Law 38, Foxtec High School subdivision, City of San Antonio, Bear County, Texas, to San Pedro Creek Development Authority and Texas Local Government Corporation, according to Section 272.001, subsection 1 of the Texas Local Government Code, to ultimately be utilized for the construction of a multipurpose recreation and civic facility for use by professional minor league baseball and other purposes, authorizing County Judge Sakai to execute necessary documents on behalf of Commissioners Court to the conveyance once completed. Mr. Smith, let's take up this issue. This is obviously, I believe, one of the last pieces of the baseball stadium.
It is. So, part of the deal, you'll recall, involved, I believe, 2.3 acres owned by San Antonio Independent School District. Part of the deal was they had to convey to an entity that had condemnation power, that is us. They had conveyed that property to the county. We now have it. The next step is for the county to convey it to the San Pedro Creek Development Authority, the Local Government Corporation, and that's what this item does.
Okay. All right, is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Calvert?
Second.
Second by Mr. Clay Flores. Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote if Justice- Commissioner Rodriguez is aware of Agenda Item 84. Hearing none, we'll let him come back out when he, when he does. At this time, all those in favor of the motion, say in my saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right. Let us now, I believe, and I need help from David or Larry, we're now going to recess. The time is now 12:30. We're going to go to executive session. Let me read that into the record. And now we're back on the time cert from 11 o'clock. Okay. At this time, we're going to go into executive session to make, to discuss and act upon if appropriate in an open session. One, according to the Local Government Code 551071, consultation with attorney for advice regarding, A, a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body and the Texas Discipline Rules of Professional Conduct of the State, Texas, clearly conflicts with Chapter 551 of the Government Code specifically. One, discussion appropriate action related to a proposed order by the Commissioners Court order an election to be held in Bear County, Texas on November 4, 2025, on the question of improvement implemented resolution designating the developments of improvements to the Freeman Coliseum, Frost Bank Center, San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo Facilities, and new multipurpose arena for the San Antonio Spurs as venue projects pursuant to Chapter 334, Texas Local Government Code. Two, 551087, economic development negotiation regarding the venue projects proposed to be considered at a possible election to be held in Bear County, Texas on November 4, 2025, as an item contained in the MOU by and among Bear County, the City of San Antonio, and San Antonio Spurs Holding LLC. So at this time, the court will go into executive session. I ask the court be cleared. Also, Kate, I'm giving the staff, let them start having lunch, and then I presume court will eat lunch and then we'll come back to open court. All right? So if we need a break right now, if y'all need a break, take a break right now. And I'm asking that David Smith, Matthew Plonco, no, Barsha Thomas, I think, also, in light of the conversations that they have that may be pertinent for executive session discussion, Larry Roberson, I think, also too, and Julie Partain, also counsel. So with that, the court is in executive session. So with that, the court is in executive session.